Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the Committee of the Whole for today, January 20th. I'm Suellen Fass, Councilor Suellen Fass, sitting in for Mayor Andrew Rennam, who's on Zoom with us today from the city. And I'm just, before we open the meeting, I'd just like to acknowledge with gratitude that we live and work on the unceded territory of the Squamish Nation, whose people continue as stewards of land and waters surrounding New Klawaquim, Bowen Island, as per millennia. And so I'm just going to introduce council. So there's Councilor John Saunders down there, Councilor Tim Wade, Councilor Alison Morse. Here's our clerk of council. Corporate Officer, that's the word, that's right, Sophie, it's Signet, Suellen Fass, Chief Administrative Officer Kern, Dylan, Judy Getty, Councilor and Islands Trust trustee, and Councilor Alex Dervison. Okay, and many staff are with us today. Thanks, everybody, for joining us. And I wanted to ask about approval of the agenda. Are there any late things today?
No, we have.
No late items. So approval of the agenda as is set out in front of us for this Committee of the Whole. Judy, are you moving that? Okay, thank you. Kim, Judy, and Tim, and all in favor? Hi.
Say hi.
Thank you. I see your hand. Any reminder that works well, and they're all in faith. Okay, and then we're coming up to public comments. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
There are no public comments, and I don't see any members of public here.
No, I didn't either. Okay, great. So we're going to go over the public comment part, which makes sense because there's lots of time for public comments. This is the beginning of public consultation, reading the opening of it, as I understand, and we'll hear more about that. So I'm going to turn it over now to Section 4.1, Staff Reports, over to Chief Financial Officer Kirsten Watson.
Thank you, Councilor Fass, through the Acting Chair, through the rest of the panel. I would like to take this opportunity to share my screen with you. We've prepared a PowerPoint presentation, which we will make available on our Bowen, on our Bowen municipality webpage and our budget webpage after the presentation. So if you'll just bear with me for a moment, let's see. Should bring it up. Great, okay. Okay. And we'll get started. Today, we're going to be presenting information to you that pertains strictly to the general fund. So this is what is funded through property taxes, through other general revenues. This is the part of the budget that's funded by all island taxpayers, whether you're part of our system or not. We do have a second Committee of the Whole presentation coming up on February 18th, and that one will be dedicated just to water and sewer utilities. So keep in mind, everything that we're talking about today pertains just to general fund expenditures. So I'll just go over the sort of format for our presentation today. I'm going to start with some of our planning assumptions. I'm going to talk a little bit about our property tax revenue requirement and how that's changed from previous year. I'll talk a little bit about non-market change and the impact that that has to our assessment role. I'll share a little bit of the BC assessment data with you. I'm going to talk a little bit about our property tax ratio. That's something that needs to be considered each year by council before approving a financial plan. We'll then move into departmental presentations from each of the department managers. I'll then come back again. I'll talk a little bit about cost drivers, just kind of do a summary of the capital expenditures. Talk a little bit about debt servicing, and then talk about the timeline for the remainder of the financial plan development process, and then we'll wrap it up. So this is a bit more of an informal format for the meeting. So I do think that if you want to ask questions, I think asking questions during the presentation is acceptable. If that's acceptable to the Chair.
Yep, sounds great.
Okay, so let's get started. Okay, so some of the underlying assumptions for this year's financial plan. Of course, we have to assume a cost of living allowance for all salaries and wages. For union staff, we're using 3.5, and that's a negotiated contract requirement. And for exempt, we go by policy, which is the average year-over-year change for the Metro Vancouver region, which this year was 2.6%. For inflation estimates, I've just used 3% as an inflationary figure for all years from 2026 through 2029. For our investment earnings, I also assume that we're going to earn between 3 and 4% throughout the planning period. And I assume a similar cost of borrowing on our variable rate debt, which is our fire truck loan. That started out at 650 a couple of years ago, and we've now paid a big piece of it off. We're down to 325,000. That will be paid off by the end of 2027. For population growth, if you recall, we experienced very significant population growth from 2016 to 2021 of 15.7%. This financial plan assumes that our population growth year-over-year will not exceed that rate of growth. And the reason that it's important to us is because this does have implications for our our community policing costs. And once our population goes over 5,000, the municipality is going to be responsible for 70% of our policing costs. And currently, we're paying 25%. So that number is set to triple, almost triple, when we go over 70, or sorry, population 5,000. And for context, our costs last year for policing were approximately $546,000. So that would have represented our 25% share.
All right. Once it extends.
It'll be taken in 2026, the red line. So it's interesting to know where our property taxes go. Of course, as the municipality, we act as an intermediary. We collect taxes not only for municipal purposes, but we also collect them for Translake and the province for school and police taxes and other bodies as well. So out of every dollar paid on your property tax bill, the municipality keeps about two-thirds of that. We keep about 67 cents of every dollar, and approximately 33 cents of every dollar goes to those other taxing authorities. So of that, about half of it goes to pay school taxes. About 3 cents of every dollar goes to the Islands Trust. Translake gets about 6 cents of every dollar. BC Assessment takes 1 cent of every dollar. Metro Vancouver, for the regional parks service, takes about 2 cents of every dollar. And police tax currently is about 4 cents of every dollar. And that's based on what a typical property valued at just over 1.3 million. And it does not include any local area service taxes. So anybody who's part of a water system tends to have parcel taxes on top of their bill as well to fund debt or reserve contributions for their water or their sewer system. So this is just, again, just relating to the general fund, only taxes and garbage parcel tax that are paid by all properties on Bowen Island. The property tax revenue requirement this year is just over 9 million. And we are suggesting that a 9.5% increase over 2024 for 2025 is what's necessary to deliver the services that we have included in this year's financial plan. That's about $787,000 more than was collected last year. And this is kind of year two of a five-year plan where we plan to have 9.5% increases for the first three years, when we do believe we can then taper off to something more sustainable. And I'm suggesting 5% as something that would be more sustainable, that could be more generally the latter years of the plan. Talk a little bit about the impact of non-market change on the assessment role. So non-market change, it's the changes, the value changes in the assessment role that come from things other than increases or decreases in market value. So those are things like the added value that comes when new homes are built, so from new construction. Or sometimes properties are reclassified from one classification. Say it goes from farm to being residential, you'll get added value on the roll through those transactions. When new subdivisions are created, you'll tend to find that a collection of new parcels adds up more than the single parcel was initially. So you'll get new value from subdivision. And also value changes out of decisions made by council, such as the granting of a permissive property tax exemption. So looking at the impact of non-market change this year, the total change in the roll from 2024 to 2025 was just over $78 million. The roll changes from residential was 72 million of that. And then looking at some of the changes in the other categories, they're quite interesting this year. So light industry changed by $714,000. And that's a, it's a significant increase in the value of light industry properties. It comes, they are mostly the cideries and the distillery are the light industry properties. And the property at the top of Buchanan Road is also classified as a light industry property. So an increase of 714,000 is significant when you consider that last year the total value of light industry properties was only 1.3 million. As well, business has increased by $5 million this year. And again, last year, that value, total value, was only 75 million. So it's a big change in those classifications year-over-year of value. Due to non-market is 44,000, and due to market change is 34. So we don't really look at the change that comes from market. It doesn't impact the amount of property taxes that are paid. What we do look at are the changes that come from these non-market changes in the roll value. So that change of $44 million, when we do the math, that's going to equate to approximately $106,000 of new revenue this year. And that is inclusive of the change in the properties out at Cape Roger Curtis from Metro Vancouver Regional District ownership to the ownership by the Conservancy. So with that change factored in, and the fact that those properties were then provided with a permissive tax exemption, we are still going to receive an additional $106,000 of new revenue from non-market change this year. And that's good news for us because... Do I have a question?
Sorry. When, when you have a moment?
What?
The 700-plus thousand comes from the cideries and other light industrial. You said that was non-market change. What accounts for such a significant difference?
So in the case of some of the ciderie properties, perhaps, they were classified as residential before. And now they are taking a portion of it, that portion of improvements that is attributed to the cider-making function, and classifying that as light industry. So it's a reclassification of residential properties as light industry.
Okay, thank you.
So the impact of us generating an additional $106,000 of new revenue, it effectively lowers our required property tax increase. So once we factor in the non-market change, although our budget is increasing by 9.5%, effectively, what we need to do is increase the tax rates by 8% in order to generate that additional revenue that's required. So what is 9.5% only feels like 8%. Looking at an average residential property on Bowen, this is the mathematical mean. 1.596 million is the average residential property value on Bowen. Last, yeah?
Sorry, you said mean, and then you said average.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I was thinking median, never mind. Disregard.
Okay.
I was going to say you just contradicted, but I did.
Is it average or is it mean? Because mean is the one that's in the middle.
It's average. It's average. Yeah, it's the mathematical average. Because one, this is the total value of all of the improved residential properties on Bowen divided by the number of improved parcels that we have. So it's the mathematical average residential property. The value this year is almost 1.6 million, and the value last year was very close, 1.585 million. So that translates to a municipal property tax bill of 3,831 per 2025. Last year, it was 3,547. That's a $284 change from last year, which is an effective increase of about 8%.
Per average size, average.
Per average property worth, 1.596 million. Now, there are different average property values out there floating around. I looked at some of the data that came out of BC Assessment. And they were quoting, not an average property, but they're quoting a typical single-family home at 1.374, which, when you look at what properties are selling for, what they're offered on the market for, it seems much more in line with what's out there. So BC Assessment, of course, collects much more precise data. They have much more qualitative data, which is why they're able to give us something which is more realistic, a typical single-family home, value of 1.374. In 2024, that value was 1.367. So very small changes in the value of property from '24 to 2025. Looking at the property tax distribution ratio, and that looks quite small, I hope you can see it. The property tax distribution ratio from, for 2025, again, we are overwhelmingly residential property. So this year, we will be collecting 96.4% of the property taxes from our residential properties. And in 2024, it was a very similar number. It was 96.5%. So very small change year-over-year. But it's interesting what you do see. The change is 0.1% from residential properties from '24 to '25. But interesting, a couple of years ago, we did change the distribution rate that was charged to utilities. We did increase that as much as we possibly could. There is a requirement to ensure that the property tax rate per $1,000 of value on utilities does not exceed $40. So every year, we have to adjust that, that tax rate that is charged to utilities in order not to exceed $40 per $1,000 of value charged on utility properties. So last year, that was 17.87. This year, we need to drop it down to 16.66 in order to make sure that we're still falling below the $40 threshold. Light industry properties are the ones that are changing significantly, and that's because of the big increase in their non-market change, where they're growing their property value from 1.3 last year to almost 2 million. So while the changes are quite small, 0.1 of a percent, effectively, we are almost doubling the amount of property taxes collected from light industry properties this year. Business also is going up significantly. But again, there's been a significant amount of non-market change activity in the business, in the business properties this year. We do charge a one-to-one ratio. We charge the same rate of tax to the businesses that are charged to residential. And it's looking just about $24,000 increase of taxes being charged to business properties this year, again, because there was significant growth from non-market change. So some of the factors that impact how much an individual's personal property taxes are going to go up. Of course, the biggest factor is the amount of the increase in the annual municipal budget. That's always going to be the most significant. But second of all, is an individual property owner's change in their property value relative to the overall change in value in the rest of the community. And I've added a link there to a BC assessment video that is a really well-done YouTube video that can be clicked on, and it really explains this concept in great detail. They've done a great job of that. So for someone who's, overall, we had very little change in the residential property market this year. So if somebody personally experienced a big, significant change in their property value, which was really different than that which was experienced overall, then their property taxes would change significantly. It could go up and down based on the nature of the change from how their property value behaved according to the rest of the properties across the island.
Does the, when you talk about the... Well, there you go. Thanks. It's not the same slide. The overall change for the rest of the community, does that mean every property that's paying property taxes?
Yeah.
That's the community?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Not just your immediate neighborhood, no?
Right.
Yeah, across the island. So the other things that affect people's property taxes are, again, the impact of the non-market change on that class of properties. The changes to the property tax distribution ratio that may be directed by council. So that's something that we'll have to seek direction from council from before the financial plan process is wound up, is that we need to affirm or seek direction if there's a change to that distribution ratio.
What does that mean? What's a distribution ratio?
So the distribution ratio is, see on this slide, the residential is one-to-one. Utilities pays 16 times for what, $1 of residential. So that distribution ratio is mandated by council, and it can be changed. And it, in fact, requirement of the community charter that it be reviewed each planning period. So I'll stop there. I'll pause and see if there's questions for anybody before we go on to the departmental budgets.
Any more questions? Is there a vote? Mayor, I'm going to go. I'm carrying on.
Okay, we'll start with Sophie and the Administrative Department.
So we're just starting with the Administration Department. That includes our HR coordinator, Christine. It's just an overview of the operations for five years. And just a bit of a description of all the responsibilities in the department. This is where you refer to Council, resources, shortage, or price support. And myself, the corporate officer oversees, sets corporate administration. But the team has a whole, first, communication, frontline customer service, records management, information technology, corporate policies and bylaws. The information, the IC program, we take care of the contracts and agreements, process insurance claim and legal matters, and we certify documents. So in 2025, the new initiatives that we're going to be focusing on is, I hope, to prioritize the records management program. And I can get into more detail about that if you like. So that just means we have a kind of an ad hoc records management program in place for the last 25 years. But we'd really like to sort it out, make it more organized, and so get a digital records management program.
A question. Records management, this is sort of all of minutes, payments, all kinds of records, is that correct?
Yeah, every record in the municipality, which includes digital and computer.
Right, because over the past 25 years, we've been over quite an arc.
Yeah.
From no digital to so much digital and digital. Anyway, I, isn't this what you would normally think of as municipal data? Like, this is all the information that we use to look back on what we did before? And what were the commitments of various parties?
Okay, that's correct, yeah. And implementing a digital records management system will help us with our own internal research as well. So, you know, when we want to look back at studies and reports that have been done in the past, we can easily access that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Judy?
So is this new software and new staff to input?
So this year, no, I'm not making any requests for new staff. This year, I'm asking for $20,000. And that's basically to get our, basically to hire a summer student to help us organize the new records management storage at the community center, as well as take care of some physical aspects of the storage. And then I'd also be developing an RFP to source and implement a digital record.
Thank you. Councilor Morse?
We had a summer students last year dealing with records. So does this mean we're going to have two now?
No, I hope to hire one summer student.
Well, then, why would that be an increase in the budget?
It's not.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it's just, sorry, it's $20,000. We asked for $20,000 last year, and this year again.
So it's not an increase in the budget because of the summer student, because it's the same budget as last?
That's right. But in further years, I'd be requesting something for software that would be a digital records management system.
Okay, and then I'm just confused about policy manual being this, all our municipal policies are already posted on our website.
Yeah, so the policies that are adopted by council are posted on the website. But there are some internal directives and policies that we'd like to incorporate into an overall policy manual for the organization.
Okay. That makes more sense.
Thank you. Here's, as well, audiovisual upgrades. This is something we started to look into last year when we were looking at possibly buying microphones for this room. But then we realized, oh, this is actually a lot more money than we thought it was going to be. So we thought maybe we should plan for that in the budget process next year. So we do have some initial estimates, and that comes out to about $70,000. And that's not just microphones, but we'd be doing a needs assessment of the new community conference room and checking out, you know, what we need for that, for both meeting attendees in that room and remote meeting attendees as well. And hopefully, coming up with something that works well for both.
Increasing, so what happens to this stuff?
This stuff is all being moved to the community center when we move.
So we're not scrapping this and replacing?
No, we're going to, we're going to keep this in the community conference room as is and see how it works, first of all. And then if we need to, well, yeah, if we want to do these upgrades and it's approved in the budget, then we proceed with that. And we'd be doing a needs assessment based on accessibility of people using the room in person as well as remote attendees.
I was under the impression, I thought this, that this is what we were taking to the new building.
Yeah.
We weren't getting something else. So there is a possibility that we would end up scrapping this.
If we get a new system in the main, in the council chambers, slash, community conference room, we would utilize this system in the other, in the smaller here. That would make two rooms, a meeting, hybrid meeting.
And in your job duties, you talk about processing insurance claim.
Yeah.
So do we have a lot of insurance from them?
We have a few per year, yeah.
The maintenance department, so I could guess that, or?
I, myself, the corporate officer, is responsible for taking any statements of damage claim from public.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Any more questions? Carry on.
And yeah, once again, these are just some points that, for the council strategic plan, communication and engagement is always part of the administration department's workload. But this next year coming up, in specific, we'll be supporting the OCP engagement, as well as a SNECO traffic management program. We'll be communicating critical maintenance for utility system issues and assisting with the engagement on the management plans that are back to the waterfin. We're also hoping to support council in fostering that relationship with Squamish Nation, creating a completely Bowen Island accessibility plan. And that's our administration staff are heavily involved in that, as well as collective bargaining. We'll start again in '26. So capital expenditures, there's the admin department, there's the needs base compared to the rest of the major projects we have going on. The $20,000 listed here to initiate temperature and humidity control space. At the time of preparing this presentation, I was asking for that. But I've received some information recently that we might not actually need to do that. The space that is slated for permanent record storage is in the basement of the community center. And at first, we thought it was maybe not humidity and temperature controlled. But I've just received some information in the last week that it is. So we might have actually that. We have $30,000 slated for replacement of computer equipment. So this is listed as a capital expenditure, but it is actually an ongoing annual expenditure that just happens to fall mark. But it is actually an ongoing annual expenditure that just happens to fall more closely than the capital budget. And that's because it's purchasing new assets, but that's to replace existing IT assets that may be failing. So all these laptops and uh computer equipment that staff are working on, they do need to be replaced at from time to time. And according to a schedule, you don't always adhere strictly to the schedule. We do kind of wait until those pieces are kind of, you know, on their last legs. To replace them. And then here's the seventy thousand dollars to upgrade the AV uh capability in the community conference room. There is a granting opportunity, uh there's a potential accessibility grant funded up to twenty five thousand dollars that we would pursue. Um but that would just need a little bit of uh consultation with the accessibility advisory committee as well as the completion of the accessibility plan. Be eligible for that. But we wouldn't look at all granting possibilities for that, so that would offset from that cost. Next. Oh, this one, the new fleet vehicle, I believe.
Um so this is a request for the organization to have one fleet vehicle. We currently only have a bylaw truck and its planners need to say visit for uh zoning redevelopment. They'd have to use the uh the bylaw vehicle, which is not um ideal because the nature of bylaws is it's unpredictable responses and you need your vehicle on short notice. Um so it fulfill that need as well as um we really don't have a a vehicle for when a visiting dignitary or um a consultant shows up, we have to use a personal vehicle. So um having a presentable uh vehicle that's clean and ready when we need it would uh would show the organization in a more professional light when we uh pick up these uh folks. So uh this will fill a lot of needs that could be addressed with the fleet vehicle.
Uh just to wrap up, uh CAO and the administration department support all departments in achieving council's strategic plan goals.
Counselor Giddy.
So can you get that information about the capital? Um it's not included in this um five year plan.
It is, yes, it is. It's at the back.
Yeah, there's several pages in the back detailing.
Are we talking about strategic initiatives now? No, there's questions for. Yeah, I know, was that part of your presentation, the strategic initiatives?
No, not the, but sorry, I was just supposed to um explain how my department's parts.
I don't see that on the beginning agenda. Um I think I saw it in the in the report.
We can talk about it um when I do finance, if you want to talk about it on the end of that, Councilor Morse?
Okay, when when the Seattle presents, right now, I think we're up for bylaw services. Me, oh. So that everybody.
Sure, Doug Woods, supervisor of bylaw services. Yeah, I'll just jump right in with the just a little statement about what we do in bylaw services. So we provide public education and awareness of um bylaws and regulations. And we work toward the development and maintenance of positive community relationships through dispute resolution, mediation and enforcement. And some of the uh main pillars of what we're doing on a daily or annual basis include responding to complaints and inquiries that's from the public and also, you know, internally with the departments. Engaging in public education and awareness, that's, you know, day to day, person to person or through public messaging. Acting as animal control officer, all things dog related. Enforcement of bylaws and everything around that, traffic tickets, et cetera. Acting as the war finger to our municipal wharves. Arranging the uh monthly and annual reserve mortgage there, overseeing the daily operations of the wharves. Issuing of permits, we typically issue noise by law exemptions, use of public places, filming permits, use of boat permits. The main ones that bylaw services responsible for. Uh preparation of reports to council uh as they arise and uh documentation of all of our investigations and outcomes, that's sort of it in the thumbnail sketch. Uh for this upcoming year, we had a few things uh we're looking at as initiatives. First among them, uh researching pay parking strategies for Snug Cove. That is a part of Kohl Island Transportation Plan from eighteen to twenty thirty eight. It's a priority in there for this timeline at twenty three to twenty twenty seven. Also looking at developing water conservation bylaw. Which is uh something I think we could really use here on Kohl Island. Uh it's, you know, most municipalities in the region already have water conservation bylaws in place. And I think it would be very useful here to have some enforcement.
Right. Yeah.
Yes, uh because right now we have no way to enforce, everything's voluntary in terms of water restrictions and people are going along with water restrictions. Uh and sometimes, you know, there's people overusing or even hooking up to hydrants and using public water that way. So uh this would give us ability to enforce. Collection of public work fees via e-commerce on the BIM website, that's part of the larger initiative to uh accept payments through our website. Very uh hopeful we can get away from the uh the bulletproof ash and envelopes method that we've been using now. Looking forward to having that in place, hopefully in the first half of this year. And that's been not least, a ferry marshaling pilot program. We've got forty five thousand dollars in grant funds from the province in twenty twenty four. And uh the plan is to hire dedicated weekend ferry marshals from May to October. And uh we'll do it as a one-time program and uh we can get back to you with an assessment in the fall. As to how it goes. And uh yeah, short and sweet, that's about it for me.
Thank you, I'm gonna go with the uh councillor Wade first and then Councilor Saunders.
For the ferry marshaling, it it talks in the public works uh department section about reviewing the lines and using this thermal plastic. I'm just wondering, it doesn't, it sounds like we're just gonna redo kind of what's already there. And my understanding was we're gonna look at much better signage and indication so that from all five areas basically would have a better chance of understanding whether what they're supposed to do and not.
Sure.
I don't know if that's you or public works, but I'm assuming you guys are gonna be directing what there is in the way of signage.
The the pavement mark is one of public works uh decisions, the signage is something I've been working together with them on. Get uh more robust and more meaningful signage, make it clearer. Yeah, um to uh address the question that councillor Wick had is um any sign to replace has to follow the uh we just the manual and uniform uh science, which is a Transportation Association Canada documented, governs the types of signage and what they should look like across countries. So on anything we put down there in the bay, um we have to go through some certain installed, so that would be something the specter engineering department to be looking at before uh it's a place to see whether it's a science and whether they conform to the standards.
Thank you, Councilor Saunders.
Just like some clarity on the process that we're using right now, is this, is this first part presentation of here's what we do and here's what we're asked for this year and then we'll talk about the money afterwards or we we ask money questions now?
Yeah.
I'm I'm good either way, like it's.
You can ask money questions, sorry.
Um, okay, so I'm I'm curious about two things within, when I look at the five-year ops budget for bylaw. One is um a big jump up this year and then it goes down.
Right.
Up to three hundred thousand, then it's going down by thirty five, forty thousand, then smooth increases, is that related to that forty thousand?
Exactly, that's the impact of the one-time forty five thousand pilot program that we're proposing.
So we got the money, but spend it basically.
Yeah, that money was um like a little extra um small communities grant that uh the province tried to get out the door before December thirty first last year, so it was unexpected, completely unexpected. We put it into accumulated surplus and we're proposing to pull it out again and use it to
Okay.
give this a try and see how it goes.
Okay, thank you. Um my second question was, this is um ostensibly something of a revenue generating department to some extent, curious to how much revenue generation actually occurred. This is three hundred thousand dollar budget, is it a neutral thing? Probably not. But I'm I'm curious to how not neutral it is.
Oh, it's um very not neutral, just to give you an idea, like, let's talk about the wharf.
Yeah.
Uh the wharf, just our cost to insure those docks every year is uh just about sixty thousand dollars a year to provide property insurance for those docks. Uh they generate um about seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars worth of work fee revenue. That's what they generated last year, so we'll see where we get it now that we've updated our fees a little bit. Uh so they're very not cost neutral. Parking ticket revenue, um anywhere from six to eight thousand dollars a year in parking ticket revenue.
So these are, these are things that we've talked about as a strategic project to generate more revenue. And and are any of these, I I I see some of these asks in in your description here. We want to do more of this, we want to do more of that, is there an intent to kind of meet that priority of, if here's some way to get more revenue and let's chase this down?
Um I would say the um the water conservation bylaw is not about generating revenue, the water conservation bylaw is about is about
Sure.
making sure that people are doing the right thing.
Totally.
For sure. Um we don't want to be writing tickets to people because of overuse, that's not something that we want to do. But yeah, it's a behavior tool rather than looking at generating because we will never get a prospect.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Councilor Morse. Um question, I guess I should have asked right at the beginning, each one of the um operating budgets has a line called legal audit and insurance and they vary very widely amongst them all. So in this one, just so how is legal audit and insurance allocated amongst all the different departments? And in this one in particular, the twenty twenty four budget will spare except thirty one thousand and twenty twenty five is sixteen thousand. So was there something special that happened in twenty twenty four?
Bylaw itself has its own legal um line item. So when we incur legal fees related to a bylaw enforcement case, um we will charge it to the bylaw department. Um there were some bylaw issues that required enforcement and required uh legal advice in twenty twenty four. And we believe those cases have been resolved, so we reduce that budget for next year.
Okay, but do they also allocate a portion of the general insurance?
No, they don't allocate our general insurance to the department.
Was the legal portion of the budget in?
Um well, it's, I'm sorry, I don't have that number um off the top of my head because we do split it out into various different departments. Planning has a piece of legal, administration has a piece of legal, bylaw has a piece of legal.
The insurance portion that gets picked up by bylaw?
Um nothing in bylaw, the docks are insured within the public works department.
That's true, I figured that from the size of the. And the professional fees within the bylaw enforcement issues?
Uh professional fees include training, um travel to training, um um membership dues.
If you travel in P O D isn't, isn't the line that picks up training?
It is, yeah.
Okay, I'm asking about the professional fees line.
Uh.
Which went from nineteen thousand to eight thousand.
I don't know off the top of my head, I'm sorry, I'll have to look that up for you and get back to you.
And then just one.
So bylaw professional fees?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry, I don't have that off the top of my head.
I'm the hard copy and um the the FTE's uh point five is going to be point two five each.
What is it?
Two point five.
Uh we haven't included that in the FTE because it is just this one ops pilot program.
Well, it says the financial plan includes a proposal to increase FTE by point five to staff two part-time ferry marshaling positions on Saturdays.
Um yes, but in the the um FTE section.
I wasn't asking about that, I was asking about.
So, okay, yeah, so I did some math and I did the hours and it worked out to about nine hundred hours a year, which was the equivalent of a point five FTE. Yeah.
The next line of that paragraph says it's the grant.
Pardon me?
The next line of that paragraph says it's from the grant.
Oh, I'm not worried about the funding, I was wondering.
Can I uh ask if there's any more questions for the? Counselor Giddy.
Um is there um some way of, it seems to me that with respect to public works and the painting of the lines uh for the ferry marshaling and this, the grant money that's been allocated now to this ferry marshaling uh pilot proposal, pilot project. Um that there's an accumulation of costs that we've got in this budget that um have to do with PC ferries and ferry marshaling, right? So is there some way of adding those all up and calculating what that cost is?
Um so the.
So we use, and I think the uh the painting one was a hundred and eleven thousand. And that's a grant money that's coming from a particular source.
That's right.
Can only be used for certain things with respect to the roads.
Yeah.
So if either, uh we haven't got to that part of the budget yet, but are there other things that we could spend that on of PC ferries just picking up some of this responsibility? For instance.
If it wa, it's very much maintenance of trunk road, so maintenance from trunk road from the ferry terminal up to the school. So uh if we're sweeping it, um we could use it for snowplow, winter maintenance of that road, any kinds of patching, seal coating, repainting. But it it couldn't be used for anything really other than direct maintenance of that strip of road.
But there are other things that we need to do to that strip of road other than the painting.
Um.
For instance.
That would be the public works, sorry, department that would sort of outline what the maintenance plan for that reason road is.
Question for the plant? That just raised the other question in my mind, so the forty six thousand dollar grant, we could use for anything we want.
Absolutely, can we use it?
Pay for this marshaling, now we could use that forty six thousand for something else.
You're absolutely right.
Why are we not trying to get PC ferries to pay for this marshaling?
I'm not saying we aren't, but we do need to fund it in the plan in case that source of funds is not successful.
As per every other year. Okay, I'm uh wondering if there's any more questions on this uh department. I'm just noticing that we're uh ten minutes to two and we're through the first two topics, which are not the. Okay, thank you, then let's move on, thank you, Governor.
We have our facilities manager coming to talk about the community center planning this year.
Good afternoon, Lee Vincent, remember?
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I'm here to do the management port or facility management portion of the presentation, so my first slide is titled. Operations plan. The community center will be open seven days a week, uh Monday to Friday, it'll be open six thirty AM to nine PM. And weekends, it will be eight AM to six PM. We will have flexibility for outlier programs and rentals like late shows or early morning classroom program. Uh custodial SAC will be on site uh to open and close the building and to maintain the safety and cleanliness of the building. Um staff will be trained in the safe operations of the systems and the equipment and all that goes on in the building. Uh my next slide titled new initiatives, the new building, so everything's kind of a new initiative, so really it's uh these are some priorities um to set out, so the first one being uh complete the construction of the community center uh including opening it, commissioning it and uh having it ready for people to come to. Uh develop community center standard operating and safe work procedures. Work with a general contractor to identify and address deficiencies and any warranted repairs. It will be a new building, but there will obviously be something that needs to be taken care of, and we do have warranties to take care of many of those things. Um review the policies and procedures of the community center to judge the effectiveness and ensure we are meeting the needs of the users and the community. There was a lot of hard work put in by the J M C on the policies that were adopted by council, but we did acknowledge at the time that there may be aspects that may need to be adjusted or adjusted as the community and ourselves learn to use the building. And then identify and select quality service providers to professionally maintain the systems of the building. So uh there are aspects of the building like HVAC, plumbing, septic, electrical that have to be taken care of by professionals for warranty and safety reasons. My next slide uh titled staff onboarding. Uh as we move into the new building, there will be a need for onboarding of new staff and also current municipal staff. The new staff being custodian training. So they will be trained on life safety systems, fire alarm, emergency generator, emergency evacuation, et cetera. Um cleaning and maintaining the building to show we're, ensure we're meeting the expectations of renter and the public and responding to the public and supporting the use of the building. So ensuring the rooms are open, set up, ready to go. They will be one of the faces of the building. So ensuring that they're prepared and uh ready for that. As for current municipal staff onboarding, moving into a new building comes in with new uh responsibilities and drills and safety. So there'll be fire safety, fire drills, and for the fire safety plan rebuilding. And also as we will be in a more public space with more traffic coming through, we will be having hospitality training um to ensure we're meeting everybody at those spaces that it needs to meet. And then a third pillar of this will be the theater technicians uh that will be trained and certified uh community members that will work with theater in the theater with theater renters and be responsible for running the theater systems and equipment. My next slide entitled capital expenditures. Uh so these are potential projects that will improve the functionality of the public spaces and encourage community use. Uh first would be in complete the paving of the parking spaces to create easily maintainable, safe and equitable access to the community center. This will make snow and rain management easier and also just the site more drivable and safe and walkable. Uh complete and furnish the backstage rooms. So it's counters, mirrors, lights, changing spaces for walkers. Community groups like use the theater. Equip and commission the community kitchen to expand the possible uses of the spaces. Um so this would allow for hot food, cold, hot food and cold food storage, uh catering storage or, you know, creating uh the ability to hold receptions with food or or drinks. Um furnish the courtyard to support even more usable space. I mean, it's a really beautiful space that could support a lot of activities, gathering, uh community connection. Enclose the HVAC equipment in the fitness room and the classrooms, construct a bike storage area to encourage healthy transportation to this building. Um so my next slide, to wrap up, these initiatives and operations are being developed to support this council strategic goals of diverse and resilient community by providing bright, modern, functional and accessible spaces for arts, recreation and cultural programming for many years to come, and also the uh strategic goal of strong infrastructure and asset management. By having, not only by having well-trained custodial staff and selecting quality service providers, as I previously mentioned, but also within annual contribution to the civic facility maintenance fund for long-term maintenance planning and replacement or replacement of building equipment in the future. Um so thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Um Stu, could you mind me, would you mind going back one slide just for a second? Uh these projects, these potential um projects, um we're calling them in our, in our plan, we're calling them enhancement projects. Um anywhere where we can find uh partnership money or grant money to complete any one of them is our first go-to. But what we want to do is, we do want to have a fallback provision in the budget. That's what we've included here. But I can tell you that we are in active communications with some other groups. I know Gillian's spoken with members of the Rotary Club or backstage of the theater rooms. Of course, we're going to be um looking for members of the arts community to see if there are any fundraising opportunities out there. The community kitchen is another one and the courtyard space as well. So all of those areas that are ripe for fundraising events, that's our first um place to look for for money, but we do just want to have um a fallback provision in case that money doesn't come through because leaving these projects unfinished would can't finish for some time, but eventually we don't need to get them done.
Thank you very much. I noticed, I think I saw the number uh three hundred and fifty thousand had been raised by donations for the community center already. So it seems to me that um that's got good potential. I just wanted to recognize. Uh we don't need um donation. Thank you. Go ahead, John.
Thank you. Um actually, I was really pleased to hear you add it with that add on there because that was one of my practices. I'd like the capital projects and there's a hundred and fifty thousand for uh
There are the enhancements.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty and then and then a hundred and seventy-five for, and then there was like, there was a bit of overlap on some of that, like kitchen here, better kitchen there kind of thing is the impression I got from from reading through there. So um like I read those as must-have, wanna-have. Would that be an accurate representation?
I think so, yeah.
And for the wanna-haves, you're gonna, you're doing the best you can, or everybody's doing the best they can to go find fundraising opportunities to get it.
Yeah.
Um with some experience in this area, I I get what you're saying that if you don't do it now, it may sit there for ten years, not get done. Is there, do you have a priority list of those enhancements that like, okay, if we can only get thirty percent of them done, these are the ones we want to do? Is there, is there anything set up on those lines?
And not a specific priority list, but there are definitely things that would uh enhance the building sooner, like the paving.
Right.
Like accessible things to make sure that
Okay, so you're prepared to manage that and say, you know, okay, we've only got X dollars, we're spending it here, here and here. As opposed to, you know, the kitchen can wait or something, the better stove can wait or whatever. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Be here later.
Uh thank you, Chair. And um uh through you, just a a few comments. The uh exciting that we're, we're almost here. I'm looking at this picture. It's nice to see a uh a a community center that is, that is almost um uh complete. Um and just some questions around the staffing of the community center that I, that I feel um fuzzy on and might have some budget impact. Uh so I note that we've got the um uh the custodial staff coming on board and then later in the budget, maybe from the recreation department, we'll hear about the um um the booking coordinator that's coming in. Um now what I'm unclear on i- is just in terms of operations staff, who are the staff that will be on site um uh to liaise with community groups or catering companies, or if there's a wedding, you know, the the folks that are putting that on on like a Saturday night or Sunday night. Um and and where is the event management staff fitting into this from a, from an operational perspective? And and whose responsibility um is it to uh pay out those staff?
Drink. No.
I'm gonna state, uh just take a piece of that and say the draft five-year financial plan that you have is missing a page. It will be um corrected and put up on the website for your uh review after this meeting. The piece that's missing is a page about community grants. I'm going to speak to it in my finance department, but there is uh an allocation, a provision within the community grants budget to fund that piece, Mayor Leonard, that you are getting at right now, which is the event um for production coordinator. And I, I'll let Gillian speak a little bit more about that proposal.
Well, on that proposal, um something that's coming from the joint management committee and it's, it's actually a little bit more targeted towards supporting arts and productions as opposed to things like weddings, as was mentioned. So um there's a little bit of, we're going to see how the need plays out with this new facility. There is also at this time, we are recognizing that there, where the gap actually lies most at this time is that event liaison piece such as run, such as a wedding or a major evening rental. So it may, it's an opportunity for discussion that how other facilities manage this need is by having someone who is an additional event liaison that is paid directly, you know, is paid as in addition to their rental fee that's put the costs on the renter for that additional service. And I think sometimes our custodial staff may be able to manage it. Um and sometimes I honestly anticipate the recreation department and facilities management picking up some of this while we don't while we're actually understanding what the true need of the facility is in this regard. But it it is a bit of a gap. Who's gonna help those, those weddings and things like that, for sure.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Uh it it doesn't. And through you, Chair, so it sounds as if there's, there's a gap that's been identified as also it's a a bit of a moving target.
Lost your sound.
Can you hear me now? Hello?
Can we, can you try again?
Yeah, I'm trying. Hello?
No.
Hello?
We've got a technical problem. Um weird. I heard a funny little click.
Hello? Hello?
In the meantime, while Sophie's working on this with Mayor Leonard, Councilor Morse, did you have a question?
Uh yeah, um so looking at, here's two things, I guess. It's confusing. It says responsible department, general municipal. And the other is uh, so we've got two pages for this cabinet stuff, right? Um so I guess both of them, they're talking about it being funded from reserve funds. Um I know there's no money left in the community recreation fund. So what reserve fund are we talking about?
Uh so which sum are you talking about? Are you talking about the enhancements or the equipment?
Well, I don't. One says remaining construction expenditures.
So that, does it say reserve funds?
And that says reserve funds.
So that's um growing communities grant, which was recognized and put into a reserve fund.
So that's what's going to come back. So this other page that's got a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Yes, that's accumulated surplus. So last year in the budget, we set aside two hundred thousand dollars of accumulated surplus. With the building being delayed, we didn't spend it. We spent a little bit of it to buy the cubicle equipment, um cubicle furnishings for the main common room. Then we are um uh carrying forward the remainder of that allocation that was made last year.
So why would, okay, it's accumulated surplus is not a reserve.
It's a surplus.
Certainly. So it's
Thank you. Um can we try Mayor Leonard again?
Test, test, test.
You can sort of hear it.
You can sort of hear me.
No, not very good. It's coming through some other
Hello?
No.
Test, test.
Nope, we're not hearing. Okay, so that's working. Try again. Oh, there we go. There we go. Please go ahead, Mayor Leonard.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh let me just jump off here with my other account. You can still hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um yeah, so I was just, uh I was just in through you, Chair, I was just speaking to um uh you know, the appreciation that that it is a moving target, um that there are, you know, it sounds like in some ways we might be zero basing this thing through the end of the year. Um the other piece that this i- I think, you know, that I'm curious about as this budget process unfolds is we haven't gotten a ton in formal recommendations um or additional, you know, approved documentation or or for council review coming through the joint um uh the joint management committee, um particularly as it relates to um uh staffing. And I, you know, I understand that there have been many robust conversations going on uh with that group. Um and I'm wondering if this might be uh the time to surface some of their work. I'd also be very curious um as this budget process unfolds to see an updated operating budget for the uh community center. I know that we're speaking in in, you know, specific numbers here and there or in broad terms, but it might be nice um for council to see um you know, the actual operating budget for this facility, uh you know, as it's expected to open in um March. And that's it, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Leonard, did you have a specific question there or was there?
Yeah, if there was a specific question, it might be, um you know, are there additional items coming from the joint management committee that that council can expect to review and approve? And uh is it possible in this budget process to see um a more formal operating budget for the community center as it's expected to play out for the end of the year? Given some of these gaps and moving targets that have been identified.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Um yes, the operating budget that's included in the draft financial, five-year financial plan for facilities is strictly community center operations. Um that is rolled up to kind of categories which we typically report on, but if council would like to see a line by line um of those expenditures, then we can certainly present that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it would be helpful for the public to call it community center operations, not facility manager. Because we've got the library and other things that both on it, so it's not clear.
Thank you for your suggestion. Did you have a question?
Well, I can't find the page now.
Any other questions for this uh section? Okay, go ahead, Councilor.
I guess if I may uh reply to um Mayor Leonard's question, um there's in terms of the staffing of the facility, there's a huge, big, long spreadsheet in terms of all of the um tasks that have been identified as potentially uh being filled by staff, both immediate and in the future. And um some lots and lots of what you've referred to in terms of all the discussions we're gonna have at that committee, there's um breaking that down into um what's the um what's the best way of leveraging whatever little money that we've got to get at the most done. So there's um some things that have been with facility management and custodial and some things that have been with um the actual booking procedures and the municipal um computer system and and keeping that um separate and then trying to tap into um supporting the application of um our partner agency so that they can leverage as much money as possible from all the other funding sources that's available to private or community organizations that not necessarily available to the um the muni. So that is close to being uh worked out. And um we're trying to come up with polishing up that list of tasks so that everybody's got an idea of all the things that we've looked at. And then trying to get some um agreement and approval in terms of breaking it down and how to make the best use of what little money um there might be. So um keeping in mind what we think is important for initial and then what we can grow into and what we can uh hopefully become self um uh self-funded so that it's not something that, you know, maybe it's seed money and with the expectation that it's going to be grant um or um other forms of of income so that it's not um a constant budget consideration. But that's what we're working on. And um it wasn't ready for this meeting, but it's uh it's gonna be ready for the next one, is my understanding.
You're speaking as a liaison with joint management agreement, joint management committee.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilor Morse?
I found my page. Um so two questions, I guess. One again goes back to this mush line of legal audit and insurance. So if the insurance line is part of that, the insurance on the building?
In facilities?
Well, it's operating by the facility man. So is that just, is that thought the part of the insurance?
Yes, it's attributed to that building in that line item.
Okay, and a share of audit legal costs as well?
Uh no, just property insurance.
Just property.
We wouldn't allocate audit or legal cost to that.
Okay, and then the action about developing operating and maintenance manuals for HVAC, et cetera. I assume you'll be starting with a, with an operations booklet or instruction, but not from the supplier?
There's an O and M manual, yes, for sure.
Probably from the suppliers.
Yeah, um but I'll be passing those down to the speakers.
Thank you. Very good. Any more questions or can we move on? I'm just noticing it's ten after two. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Well, maybe we can take some time off on this. Uh this is this presentation for the finance department. So see how fast I can talk.
Uh I don't mean to rush you.
No, 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 I understand. I absolutely agree.
Yes, thank you.
Uh so the functions that we look after, most of them are actually established within the community charter itself under section uh one forty-nine. Finance is responsible to manage all financial activities of the municipality. We need to develop the five-year financial plan. We oversee insurance and risk services. We're required to safeguard municipal assets. We're required to do the financial reporting and coordinate the annual audit. And we are required to produce the annual tax notices and collect the property taxes. We do that And we are required to produce the annual tax notices and collect the property taxes. We do that, uh, with for staff. There is. Mirwin Hines, our accounting coordinator, she looks after all of the payroll, all of the accounts payable, all of the property tax record updates. Delbin Kong Weaver is our financial accountant. She does all of the account reconciliations, all of the accounting work in the back. She really drives. Um, the, uh, regular reporting, um, getting all those entries in to get them to a place where we're ready to do regular reporting to council. Eli Allen is our newest member added to the finance team. She is looking after accounts receivable. She's doing all of the, uh, incoming cash, uh, posting of payments. She's doing all of the utility billing and she's taking on a new function this year, which is providing a big amount of administrative support to the business license function. It is a very heavily administrative load in business licensing, so she is supporting Jared, our business license inspector, with. Creating the records, entering the data, doing all of that kind of stuff. And lastly, there's me. I am the CFO and I look after the financial plan development. I look after, um. Uh, property risk insurance. Uh, I do all of the budgets for both the utilities and the, um, municipality general, and I work a lot on policy development and bylaw drafted. Um, and I produce the year-end audited financial statements. So new initiatives that we have this year, um, a lot of it is we play a supporting role. We support all of the other departments to carry out their priorities and their projects for the year. Um, some of the big things that we are going to be working on this year are we're continuing to support the asset management plan development. Um, we're continuing or we're gonna start working on, um, a municipal regional district tax bylaw. Well, I anticipate we'll be working very closely with. Um. With Daniel and the planners on on that project. Uh, there is a plan to do a water and sewer development cost charge by law this year. I do have it on my plate to complete a local area service funding policy. Uh, the municipal procurement policy is very overdue and 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 due for an update. Um, same with our budgetary and financial planning policy is very much due for an update. Um. Again, I think Sophie mentioned that collective bargaining will be starting up presumably this year. Again, the the agreement expires December thirty-first. Uh, we will begin work on a reserve fund policy to help support long-term renewal of our infrastructure and our assets. And we do ongoing reviews of all of the fees and charges bylaws across multiple departments. And our biggest initiative that I'm so excited about because it will be a real improvement of service delivery to the public. And that is being able to complete implementation of website e-commerce. So being able to accept payments through our website is going to just. Pedal pull us into the twenty-first century and I'm so excited that we'll have that functionality going forward.
Is there a question?
Yeah.
Um, regarding the e-commerce functionality, is what's the, uh? Cost per transaction that we're looking at?
We haven't got those actual, we haven't selected a service provider yet. There are some. That we have to make sure that, we also have the library that we work with, so we do have to make sure that, um, that it's also compatible with, um. The systems in place down at the library. So it is a, it's a much bigger deal to actually select, um, a payment processor that's going to be in the background. So. I don't have that level of detail yet. We're just kind of embarking on, we're doing the, uh, website designs first and I think the the payment processor piece is secondary.
Thank you. Okay, there you are.
Um, community grants, I wanted to talk about that. That's one of the pages, which I apologize, I left out of the original book. So there is in our community grants this year, there is, um, an inclusion of thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, this is being looked at again as a two-year pilot project. Um, to establish a contract production coordinator position. Um. Again, it will be coming forward by the joint, um, joint operating community center committee. At this point, it is being looked at like it would be managed by the heart, and it does make a lot of sense to have this position as a. Contract position that's managed by the heart because of their ability to leverage other funding to help support that. So the. The heart can access grant funding that we as a municipality would not otherwise be eligible to get, that that, um, that whole source of. Grant funds within the arts community is so significant that if there's a chance to leverage additional, um, core support for that position, we would really like the opportunity to, um. To see what is available out there. So that proposal's coming forward to council, uh, I believe in February sometime. We is, we estimate that that's a two-year funded contract position and the purpose of that is to cultivate, attract, support the public arts presenters. Um, to help develop new, uh, ren- revenue generating strategies, um, grant applications and and partnerships with other community groups or or corporate partnerships. And be responsible for publicity and promoting that venue. What we don't want is to have this beautiful building and just build this wonderful facility. We don't want it sitting empty. Somebody has to be out there marketing it and and filling it. So that is, that is our biggest challenge that we see. Uh, moving into this building, one of our biggest challenges. So we do expect that after a two-year pilot of this proposal, that sufficient activity will be generated in order, um, you know, coming from repeat productions that return to the venue. Or through grant applications that this position hopefully eventually would be, um, self-funded. So that is our goal. And that's our proposal that is included within the community grants budget this year. Wrapping up for finance, um. We provide support to all of the other departments to deliver on council's strategic priorities. Two of the most significant strategic priorities that are supported through, uh, the finance department. Um, of course, our engaged community and effective government. We do that through our policy and bylaw review and development. We're doing that through our e-commerce enabled website and our strong infrastructure and asset management. We are achieving that by undertaking policy review and development as well. So with that, I can take some questions or we can move on to fire an emergency?
Also, does that answer your questions about council strategic initiatives?
Oh. I could, um, I will address one piece about that. Thank you, sorry. We do have a page in our, uh, budget book. Um, we've called it strategic initiatives, so. These are mainly project-based expenditures that often touch different departments. They're not managed by a single department. They often require support and input of many different departments to. Move them over the finish line. Um, some of the significant strategic initiatives in twenty twenty-five. One of course is the official community plan review, which will be spearheaded by Daniel's department. I'll leave that, uh, for him to discuss further in his presentation. A second is the mu- um, the municipal and regional district tax, again, has a significant financial component, so. Finance will be supporting, but again, it will be managed, um, Daniel's department will be taking the lead on that one. So I'll leave that for him as well. Community housing partnership, same thing, but what is in here is, um. The establishment or development of a sewer and water, uh, DCC, uh, development cost charge by law. I do have it in the general fund because of the funding source for this project. So typically, if we're going to do work on a sewer DCC. Or, um, a water DCC, we're going to do the work and we're going to charge it back to that local service area. However, in this, um, case. We, we do have a plan to develop a sewer bylaw, a sewer DCC bylaw and the Cove Bay DCC bylaw. We're keeping it in the general fund because the funding is coming from the Housing Accelerator Fund, which is a. A significant one-point-four million dollar grant that we've been awarded from the federal government and it is targeted towards, uh, producing, providing new housing units within the community. So a piece of that, there's an action plan that's laid out that is attached to that grant funding. We have to, um. Make progress on that action plan and one of the, one of the projects included in that action plan is development of a sewer and water DCC by law. So. That is what is, um, a significant project that's in there for about fifty thousand dollars within the strategic initiatives budget.
That's on page thirty-four, I think, of the report. Yeah. Great, does that answer your question?
Well, yeah, my question, I guess, was, so neither of these are gonna be a cost to the taxpayer. They're gonna be a hundred percent funded by. Both the, um. Housing initiatives.
Yeah.
Housing partnership.
That's right.
And the, um. DCCs will be a hundred percent funded by the Housing Accelerator.
That's right. The municipal regional district tax, I believe, were funded from accumulated surplus. But the other ones, community housing partnership, the DCCs and the official community plan are all funded through, um. Grants that were received from the province either at the end of twenty twenty-three or in twenty twenty-four.
Any more?
Well, this paragraph up above says, um, phase four includes submitting the MRDT. Um, fifty thousand in funding for this initiative is being provided through the federal government's Housing Accelerator Fund, so that. Seems to imply that the MRDT is being paid for by the Housing Accelerator Fund too.
Um, you know, I'll check that before the end of today and I'll get back to it to make sure that I've got the right funding source for that one. I. Off the top of my head, I thought they were funding that one from accumulated surplus.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Durkins.
You mentioned, um. That, uh, staff's roles would be supporting by, uh, sort of, uh, enforcement of business licenses. Uh, just for clarity and to remind the public, what ten department does, uh, how business licensing fall under?
It is, um, it's within, um, the planning department for the most part.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, just checking to see if Mayor Leonard had any questions. Now I can see what this, okay, thank you. Um, that's great. No more questions, then let's move on.
Uh, we have fire and emergency.
Yep. Yeah. Just, yeah. That is fair, sir. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Ian Thompson. I'm the deputy fire chief. Um, thank you, Mayor Thompson. Uh, we'll just start with an overview of the fire department's. Um, operations plan. So the emergency response services. We do fire suppression, medical calls, response, rescue, safety operations. We also work with the emergency program coordinator. Our team is thirty trained volunteers. Surprise of a full-time fire chief, part-time deputy chief, part-time training officer and a part-time emergency program coordinator. Our mission is to provide. Professional. And emergency response. And. Our part-time positions require upgrading to full-time roles. Under the underwriters, they say we should have thirty-six. Trained firefighters for the size of this island. And so we're hoping to this year put on a job fair and hire four more volunteer. So this next slide shows. The last five years, um, and before that, it was fairly consistent. Our medical calls, our call volume was around a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty calls a year and that went on for. Probably ten years or more. The last five years, they've jumped up seventy-five percent. So this year we were at two hundred and forty-seven calls. And these are, um, through Suri dispatch, so this is nothing that we've put out. This comes out from our dispatch. Um. So that puts a big demand on all the volunteers we have and any given day, we wouldn't have thirty volunteers. On the island through work commitments, through holidays, through family. A lot of times we're down to maybe twenty.
Um, so.
Yep.
Um, I'm just, uh, wondering, uh, is there, uh, what's the explanation for the rise in calls?
Uh, that I don't know. It started around COVID. We started to get more calls there, um, which we thought was strange because. Everyone was on lockdown, so we thought that would be, we'd be going down. It actually started getting that. And a lot of them, it could be, be, you know, the now on the weekends with a lot more tourists over here, a lot more people on the island. Um, there's no rhyme or reason. We can go one day with ten calls and go two weeks without one, so there's, there's no way to predict.
Thank you. I just wondered, the information was there, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I am Tess Taylor, the emergency program coordinator. Uh, and, um. So for new initiatives, we have the evacuation and rapid damage assessment. Yes, uh, right now we have neither, uh, stored in our EOC for, uh. For either, either event, uh, an event that required either of those. Uh, the kits, uh, would include. Uh, everything from flagging tape to bohards to, um. Caution tape, uh, all of the. Safety gear, gloves, et cetera, all that kind of stuff. Uh, the equipment. Equipping six teams, so two responders for each for evacuation kits and six responder. Groups for the rapid damage assessment would total about eighty-five hundred dollars. And then the new, uh. Full-time employee request, uh, would be for the EPC role, the emergency program coordinator role, to go from point six to eighty, uh, one. Uh, this is, uh, the key tasks preparing, uh, preparedness planning, training, public education, grant administration. Uh, volunteer support, uh, and response coordination. Uh, the. The big thing with this rule is that with the new Emergency Disaster Management Act, there are new requirements, uh, that have been coming up and will continue to come up over the next couple of years. Uh, anticipated for mid-two thousand twenty-five is actually, um, bringing in the new requirements for risk assessments, emergency management plans and business continuity plans. While we do have the, uh, emergency management plan and a. Uh, hazard risks and vulnerabilities, the new requirements are much more robust, so they'll be, uh, they, they both will need to be seriously updated.
Yeah. Thank you very much. And do we have any questions for our emergency teams? Go ahead. Counselor Wake, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I've been looking at the, uh, community wildfire resilience plan. And, um, uh, and I'm glad to see that we're, we're making progress on, uh. A number of the forty-six, uh, recommendations they have in there, but I'm wondering. Who's, uh, who's sort of responsible for monitoring our progress with that and and I think in a couple of years, we're gonna need to update it.
Uh, in a slide coming up, we're not, we're not completely done with the emergency fire and emergency. We, we're, we're kind of teat teaming, so we're gonna go back a little bit. All these ways, then we'll bring our questions, my apologies.
You, you can, you can ask questions. During as well, but I will be getting to a slide. That will encompass that.
Great, thank you.
Carry on.
So the next one, the, um, we're also asking for an FTD request for a training officer. Right now is it a six? We'd like to bring, bring him up to a, a one. Um. The training program now through the new fire safety act, uh, which started years ago. Um, it's brought everyone up to the same standard as a career firefighter in town. So we can't, uh. Have members on a fire scene, uh, unless they have the, all this, uh, training. It's an expensive, takes an awful lot of time to get. People through it. The training officer now is putting quite a bit of extra time because we want to get everyone into this workload that. We are now, uh, the exact same as a career hall in town with our training. And the next one is also a request for a deputy chief position as a point eight, like to bring up to a point one also. His key roles are fire and space inspections, safety education, operational management. Um. And one of the things that we don't have is any coverage for if the fire chief full-time is on holiday. Or away off island. Uh, we always have to have someone on call twenty-four seven, so we get paid seven hours a day. But we have to be able to respond twenty-four hours a day. So we split that role up between. The training officer, myself and the fire chief. Right now, the fire chief and the training officer are away for a week, so I'm in charge for the next. Five days, um, twenty-four seven. So this is how we would like to get. More into the position of, then we can fall back on ourselves and other members.
Okay, um, me again, capital expenditures, uh, request for, uh, twenty twenty-five for misting stations. Uh, you've probably seen these cropping up in communities all over, anywhere where people are gathering outdoors in the summer months where people are active. Uh, so this is a request, uh, for seventeen thousand dollars to install four misting stations. Uh, two would be kind of more permanently installed, uh. And could have or could not have water refill, water bottle refill stations and two would be, uh, much more temporary in nature and, um. Yeah, so that would be for others.
Okay, the next one is a capital expenditure. Okay, the next one is our capital expenditures. What we'd like to do um in the main hall and on our, in our satellite hall uh is install heat pumps. Right now, we run on propane. Um, it's very expensive. At the satellite hall, we spend fifty-one hundred dollars a year. And that is keeping that building at twelve degrees only. So when you go in there, you notice it's cold. Can't go any lower simply because we've got water on our trucks and stuff, so we've got to worry about things freezing. So um we could save from satellite hall, we installed heat pumps, about thirty-five hundred a year. And the new main halls, the same thing, we're on propane in the base side. Um, so we spent forty-two hundred dollars a year there, and with heat pumps, it could be a saving of about twenty-five hundred dollars a year also. Okay, this one here, this is what we're asking, and it's a little ironic. So last night at eight-thirty, we got a call from R C M P saying there was a missing hiker up on Mount Gardner. We put out a call to members, we had twelve members show up, went from eight-thirty till just before midnight, and we did find a hiker. But it would have been a whole lot easier if we had a piece of equipment instead of having members hiking up the mountain in the dark with flashlights. And uh, the young man who was rescued, new to bone, didn't have a flashlight, was lost, could just tell us where he had seen a marker. So basically, we were combing the, uh, combing the mountain without any real direction of where it was. So we, and ended up finding him around midnight. So, I mean, a chain like that would be good for rescue. Also, for forestry, there's a lot of roads that we can't get any of our trucks up to, so we'd be carrying pumps and equipment up and that also. The next one, oh, sorry.
What do you mean by for forestry?
Well, for like wildland fires and things like that, we have, we have to transport a lot of uh hoses and things and pumps up.
Great, thank you. Forest fires?
Sorry, what kind of uh, what kind of equipment?
It was an A, ATV, all-terrain vehicle. Uh, the cost for that one, we're looking at around forty thousand dollars. Uh, this next one is, I'm not sure if anyone's actually been in our E O C when it rains.
Oh, yeah.
So when we originally decided to come down this design for the building, it looked big, wide, open, not knowing that tin roof and a, not even a heavy rainstorm, and just the acoustics alone, it just bounces all over there. The rest of the building on the, we call the clean side, which is our office, is Tess's office, got the exact same roof line, but we have a T-bar ceiling in it, and it dampens the sound down like you wouldn't, you, you really don't hear what it's doing outside as you do as when you're in the E O C room. So that's one of the requests was like, and we're asking for twenty thousand dollars for that.
We've brought enough money in the fire department equipment reserve shots to pay for all of this, correct?
Uh, that I'm not a hundred percent sure. Chief, chief takes care of the budgets. He's on holiday.
Well, a lot of it says reserve fu- uh, reserve fund, so I, I'm assuming I.
Yeah, I think we do, because there's a few other things we'd like to pull out of reserve fund also.
In the budget book, all of the draws on the reserve funds are found in the pages on the back, so you can see that we're not going into the negative on any of our.
Okay, his next slide is, um, this is what we've purchased, or municipalities purchased. It's to replace our nineteen-seventy-eight mini pumper, which we use the same thing as to go a lot of roads and steep inclines, especially on Eagle Cliff area where you can't get a main pumper up. So we can, uh, we can use this. It's been purchased, and we're hopefully take possession of it in uh March. That was four hundred and twenty thousand total that we asked for. And the other one is a hundred and four thousand. We're asking for, for over five years to replace um uh equipment, gear, uh helmets, um. Uh, a helmet, believe it or not, has a ten-year lifespan, and it's, oh, through work, work uh safe. So we can't actually say, well, it still looks good. You've got to keep wearing it. If something happens, you could be liable for it. It's the same with our turnout gear. Um, after ten years, it's obsolete. Uh, you can use it for training. You just couldn't use it in an actual fire, so. And this next one is uh the same thing. It's a hundred thousand dollars over four years for replacement of uh just equipment that we use, uh just wear and tear on everything, uh hoses. They have to be tested annually. A lot of those sometimes fail with couplings, um, new chainsaws. I would like to get some new battery-operated jobs of life and cutters and separators. Right now, we've got them, but they're hooked to hydraulics, and it's a lot slower and not as efficient when you have to be dragging cords and hose lines around with you. So we'd like to, uh, replace those with battery-operated ones.
So new initiatives for the operations budget, uh, we would be applying for a forty thousand dollar grant for the E O C. This will fund a functional exercise, uh similar to the one we held, not, not twenty-twenty-four, but back in twenty-twenty-three, we did the first functional exercise. So similar to that, uh, a mobile E O C supply quit, uh, equip, and we now have the E O C in the primary fire hall, uh, well-equipped. But a lot of that came from the boxes that had the, the mobile one in it. So now we need to refill the mobile one, get that up to grade, and uh set it out at uh the satellite fire hall. Uh, I also would like, would put in this, the uh electrical upgrade to the E O C that would coincide with the putting in of the T-bar ceiling. We'd have a electrical drop-down from the ceiling rather than having the cord running on the floor. Uh, also, uh, E S S, and forty thousand dollars for uh E S S, again, from grant funding, primarily for training and exercise, voluntary recruitment and retention, and uh the reception center and group lodgings. Is also really big on that. Um, both of those two grants are up by ten thousand dollars uh over last year. Last year, they were both thirty thousand dollars. I'm sure they'll be forty. And then the uh Fire Smart Community Funding and Support, uh, this one is where Tim's questions about the recommendations, uh, the Fire Smart Grant would uh fund a Fire Smart Coordinator rather than having a contractor do this work. We'd like to hire somebody in-house. Uh, and that, one of the things that person would be doing would be monitoring the recommendations and making sure that they're um, ticking all those boxes. Uh, that person would also be doing, uh, ensuring that we continue with a, uh, home ignition zone assessments and rebate program, and initiate a chipper program with off-site uh disposal and enhance public initiatives and uh starting the work on the critical infrastructure that the assessments uh indicated we needed to be done.
Okay, this last one is um, it's a forty thousand dollar grant uh that we've applied for. We were hoping to find out last week, but we haven't heard anything yet. What we'd like to do with that is, for the satellite hall, um, is buy gear racks. Right now, our gear is either, they're hanging on a hook, and boots and pants are on the floor, and a lot of spiders out there. Also, uh, get a power washer and, you see, if I'm walking machines to do our turnout gear, so we don't have to send it out now, but also we'd like to get a dryer for our turnout gear, just for the, the speed of drying it. So members don't have their gear just sitting out for a few days drying, and they're just wet. And then if there's any question.
And, yeah, yeah, all of the requests do address council strategic planning priorities.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm gonna go to my questions list. Tim, uh, Counselor Wake, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Morse, I think you had a question?
Um, well, it was just the, to do with the misting stations. I'm having a little trouble with that, being as we're on an island. There's tons of tree coverage. There's lots of creeks. There's lots of streams. There's the ocean where you can go paddling and splash yourself and whatever. And so I'm, if we had to cut something to meet us.
Perhaps, but perhaps we can save that for a council meeting. That's what we're hearing the advice of our professional staff and. Are there more questions that they could answer? Counselor Getty?
The, the plans that you've got for the misting stations, where, what's the water district where they're located?
They're all in Snow Cove. One would be at the community center. That would be for um any events that are taking out, placed outside. People that are walking by, they're coming back from a, a walk down Mount Gardner Road. Um, that would be one of the more permanent ones. The other more permanent one would be down at the um, we'll do cottage. The, because again, we're having people coming back from their hikes. They're getting ready to go on the ferry. They're already getting overheated. Uh, those two would be the more permanent ones. The temporary ones, the ones that are just kind of um, wood beaming, uh, pro- propping everything up. One would be at the fire hall, uh, the primary fire hall. Even just last year, I had one person come by and knock on the door, and she was just overheated. She wanted to know if there was a way, because she was walking down the road, which in the daytime is in full sun, and that's where the path is. And so she wanted to know if there was any ways that she could get back into the woods, um, to at least cool down a little bit and um. And then the other one would be in Crippen Park, and that would require a partnership with Metro Vancouver Parks, obviously, and um we've talked about some locations like right in the main field, but we're, we're still working on where might be a good location for that, for that.
So they'd be all on coal plate phone. Okay, is that answered? Any more questions for our emergency and fire crew? All right, thank you very much.
Fine, thanks. Uh, Professor Houston, the manager of environment and parks and planning. So our department is guided by the Parks Plan and the Climate Action Strategy. Our new initiatives focus on um climate action and the environment. And um we engage, we also provide support for community projects, uh, engaging other departments and other levels of government. Uh, I am, it's probably a department of one, uh, but we overlap considerably with the Parks Operations um apartment, uh, part of Public Works. So I um engage closely with the operations manager, and we plan the implementation of infrastructure renewal projects. Um, we, he then directs the operations crew, uh, often in the completion of those projects and also in the regular maintenance activities for the department. Uh, just to give you an idea of what those include, uh, we have a hundred and fifty-three hectares of parkland that we're maintaining, fifty-two corners of trails, twenty-eight developed beach accesses. Um, and then, of course, among many other things here, is, uh, in particular, the library and Snow Cove takes up a lot of our times with um several lawns and garden beds and planters and sidewalks and walkways and all those things. Um, so you can see that on the right-hand side of the organizational chart, there's a Parks Operations Crew just for the summer. They are um together, are up at a point six F T. Uh, we try to hire them from May to September. Um, if they've been a little, it's been a little bit shorter in recent years. And they um are responsible for the bulk of those maintenance activities. Um, and then the rest of the roads and parks crew would, would fill in for the rest of the year. Some of the new initiatives that we're working on this year are um, we have a couple of grant-funded projects. There's a Climate Action Strategy Update. We've applied to the Pacific Institute for Climate Solutions to hire an intern. Um, it's a fifteen thousand dollar grant. We actually just learned on Friday that that grant application was successful, so yay. As, we'll just hope we can hire someone to do the project. Um, and then we are collaborating, collaborating with REC on um a uh planting project for the community center. We will, uh, have applied to the, or we are applying to the B C Hydro regreening program uh for ten thousand dollars for trees and shrubs to apply to the community center. And um we've gotten that grant a couple of times before. Last year, we used it to do some planting along the multi-use pathway and um and uh Fire Smart Planting in the fire hall. We also plan on collaborating with the um Swamish Nation on some, an interpretive sign for um to celebrate and to help people learn the new Swamish language names uh for the beaches and um for the island. We hope to include kind of, uh, you know, sound buttons, so people can learn the names and probably install that somewhere in the coast somewhere more central for, to help learn. And then, of course, we have um a, a list of policy initiatives always, um, that we're trying to get to. We started on a Parks Inspection Policy and Stream Mapping Update. Uh, I hope to finish those this year, and then some tree cutting guidelines for right here in areas. We are also proposing that the part-time positions, um, the point six F T for those two positions be converted to year-round full-time positions for a net increase of one point four F T. Um, the, so in the past, these positions were um partially funded by the Canada Summer Jobs Program, and that funding is um has significantly decreased to the point where we, we don't get it uh most of the ti- uh, probably about half the time. Um, and it also restricts hiring to individuals aged fifteen to thirty. Um, we haven't had many suitable applicants and within the recent years. And so we've been hiring high school students, which is great, but they can only work for two months. Um, we also find that they don't have a lot of experience, so we're training them for most of the summer to work independently. Um, and then, yeah, by the time they can, they can, their work term is over. Um, and then um, it's already so far into the growing season that we're really starting off way behind, kind of thing. Um, so the idea is that we can attract quality applicants with the full-time positions. Uh, hopefully with a little bit of construction experience and um some landscaping experience who know how to tend to some gardens. Uh, we will have quite a bit more uh gardening to deal with, with the community center. Um, so that would make it much more efficient. And um we also have, you know, doubled our parkland since two thousand eighteen. We've had a ten percent increase in kilometers of trails as well. And even before those increases, we had our, our Parks Plan was recommending that we increase our maintenance budgets to uh improve our existing parks. So um, we also know that a team of two can easily complete a lot of our smaller infrastructure projects, so things like landscape tie stairs. Um, we uh this year finished these two bridges at the golf course. Um, I, our crew is quite capable. I think they really enjoy projects like this. Um, I think it's quite satisfying for the crew to do them, but we found that it was quite challenging um, to keep up with our regular maintenance activities when we had so many, you know, had to put so many people on this job, and it was a challenging job. And so um I think that uh with these new positions, we'll have a little bit more flexibility to complete these projects. Um, it increases our resiliency in the department, and um it definitely supports council's strategic priority of self-sufficiency and public works. And for this project in particular, it um saved us probably about sixty thousand dollars or so. Our capital expenditures, um, so starting for this year, we have a Grafton Lake Watershed Management Plan uh for a hundred thousand dollars. So this looks at the watershed holistically, uh, from drinking water to stormwater management. And um, you know, it looks at all the development that's occurring in the watershed. And uh we'll also include management of the park, of course, um, so that we can support recreational activity, but you know, ensure that the long-term and short-term health of the watershed isn't compromised. And that will be funded in part by coping water users, twenty-five percent, and then the rest will be for the park's reserve. We also have a, a pit toilet installation. This was on, in the budget last year. We um purchased the building and um we didn't install it right away. I would want to take a little bit of extra time to um get an environmental assessment and just make sure that we're putting that in the right place and using the right kind of vault um, to ensure that, that it's not going to affect the lake, you know, either now or long-term into the future. Um, so we have fifteen thousand dollars for the buying, purchasing the vaults and then installing. So we have $15,000 for the buying, purchasing the vaults and then installing it. Replacement and renewal of our park, trail and beach infrastructure. This year, we've included $110,000 and then that, a total of $110,000. And that increases to $150,000 annually for the next, for subsequent years. Some of the priority projects we've identified are Kate's Bay Beach, Seymour Bay Beach and Clifford Beach, all stairways to, for access to the sea. And then just to wrap up, I would say our work aligns well with council's strategic plan. We have specific initiatives like the Grafton Lake Management Plan. And then, you know, our work on reconciliation, climate change action and ecosystem protection. And then, of course, the additional ATs would allow us to support council's strategic priority of self-sufficiency in public works. Any questions?
Thank you, Chair. In the, I guess as a capital project, the park management plan, $100,000, is that to develop plan or implement, execute it? What's your business?
To develop the plan.
To develop the plan.
Yeah, we, just to give you a little bit more detail, we looked at approaching it in a couple of different ways. And I had a workshop with the Environment Climate Action Committee and with the Parks and Trails, Parks and Greenways Committee. And as well, like I met with other departments and including our Director of Engineering, just to determine whether we wanted to focus in on just the park and the park management or really look at the whole watershed holistically. And it seemed like everyone's preference and the recommendations, recommendations to council were that we need to look at the entire watershed as a whole instead of having all these, these new plans and, you know, different kind of environmental assessments here and there, and that this would be the best approach.
It's an amalgamation of a whole bunch of other smaller projects to some extent?
I think that some of the work done in the past could be incorporated into this work, but it would be a whole.
I guess what I'm wondering, what's the expected outcome of a $100,000 plan?
That, well, I mean, I would probably just say that.
Everything you're doing.
The long-term and short-term health of the watershed is not compromised and that, that we're managing all of the activities around the lake in a way that are protecting the watershed for a long term.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Morrison?
Counselor Song, we sort of asked some of my questions. So there's been monitoring done on water quantity to a couple of big studies, so you're not going to reinvent the wheel?
No, I would, I would hope that, you know, as a first step, obviously we're using consultants on this project, but as a first step that they would go through every, all the work that's been done previously. Because there is a certain amount, I mean, there were quite a few environmental assessments done as part of the rezoning applications as well. So hopefully, at least, you know, there's a little bit of work done in those areas. And then things like water quality would, if those are, you know, quite a few years old, they give us a really great baseline to work from and see if there's been any change with the recent development around the lake. So there should be.
Y'all way you did.
Yeah.
Years back. So I was a little surprised because I thought the management plan was going to be, where are people going to be allowed to go? Not anything to do with, you know, the water, all these studies about water quality and quantity and hydrology and everything. I wasn't expecting to see any of that in the management plan. I thought it was going to be, where can people go safely?
We could talk about that in the council meeting, that's what I look to too, but we're just receiving this stat.
Well, I know.
Do you have a question?
I mean, that was my question on that. And I think, somewhere, it's really confusing that all these aren't in the same place. All through your presentation, you talk about Scarborough Beach stairs. And they didn't appear on the overhead and there was no mention of Seymour Bay Park stairs in, in your written. So things aren't totally.
Question, would you like her to answer the question?
Well, I guess it's a comment more than a question. So is Seymour Bay, is Scarborough in or?
So I didn't realize, but the, the operations crew managed to do a lot more work at Scarborough than I thought. The year before last, they, or that they'd only finished a couple of the stairs and that there was more to do. But I think we decided that was, that was okay for now and identified Seymour Bay Beach as requiring more immediate work. I, I, we just, I just talked about this, this with the Parks Operation Manager after I submitted that, but before I submitted this, so we changed it. So sorry for the inconsistency.
And quicker, quicker place seem to be in and out of different places as well.
I'm going to put myself on the speakers list and I'm wondering if you can speak to the, climate impacts are happening all over the place. Is that part of what would be included in the Grafton Lake Management Plan?
Yes, definitely. We had, I did have that as one of the things that we would need to look at and in terms of, you know, longer droughts and, and potential for, I mean, we'll see what they say, but, but there is potential for, you know, growth, those are another thing. So water quality, is the result of the, does it impact the climate change as well? Were you saying all around the island or just Grafton Lake?
Just Grafton, yeah.
Just Grafton, yeah. That is something that we'll look at.
Thank you. And regarding the metal stringers there, the replacement for the bridge run, of course, is that what that is? Is that something you might be doing more of? It seems like the maintenance costs would be lower, wouldn't they?
Yeah, it was really appropriate in that one place. So usually we're just using steel stringers at the bottom and then that little wood frame on top. And it is aesthetically kind of nicer as well than, than the big hefty aluminum gangway type bridges. In this case though, just with the access that we had and the cost of, I don't, the estimates for a wooden bridge were just quite a bit higher than they were with an aluminum bridge. And it had a lot to do with timing as well, but we, they were fairly inexpensive. So.
Okay, so that's fine.
If we have access, I think we will continue to consider that.
Great. I just wondered if it was a whole change of process or maybe you're just being flexible, just being flexible, that, okay. Thank you. I'm going to get Counselor Wake first.
I was excited to hear about the change of names from beaches and wondering about pronunciation. You mentioned push button for sound. Wouldn't it make more sense to have just a QR code? And that way you could have it in a lot of different places that people would be able to access it. You know, it took me quite a while to learn how to say that word at home. And it takes some practice. And anyway, just, just a thought.
For sure. We were considering QR codes and then kind of heard about the tendency for them to have security issues. So people putting a sticker over top and so that it leads you to a different site than the one that you intended. I, I think we might still do that at the beach itself. But the only reason I was thinking of a more central push button sound kind of thing is because, well, we found some that exist and, but they come in kind of four packs. So we went to the trouble of creating an interpretive sign and purchase something like that. We would want to do, you know, all this Swamish language names in one place so that you have a central place to learn them.
Thank you. Did you have one more?
Yeah, so, um, cost benefit analysis, I guess. You mentioned the wooden decking and the wooden bridges are much more expensive. And I'm guessing they also have a shorter lifespan. So I guess from my perspective, the less expensive and longer lifespan, bridges is what we should be doing to maximize benefits of our tax dollars. And the other question I guess has to do with the person's nations' names. Are the regular beach names supposed to go on stage here?
No, no, they wouldn't. These, these beach names were replacement names. They would still say beach below, but it would be like Memaw, Ayak and then Neighborhood Beach below that. So it's the same as all the rest of our, but these, the, yeah, they were replacement names.
Thank you. Any more questions? Of the manager. Okay, thank you. Very good. Carry on. This is good, everybody. We're free to bond.
Thank you, Attorney General. My name is Daniel Morton. I am the manager of planning and development. Here's a faculty of the planning department, 2025 budget. The planning and planning department manages building and development applications. So some of our ongoing operational tasks include building permit applications, inspections of active building permits. We process various development applications, including development permits and job variance permits, border variance permits, temporary use permits, rezoning and OCP amendment applications. And then spend significant time with public inquiries for development and building related questions. One of our goals of our department is making sure that we are a friendly place where people can come to seek questions about what they're allowed to do on their property. And we find that, that being a friendly place for people to come leads to better outcomes for everybody. Some of our specific tasks envisioned in 2025 outside of strategic plan items include work to digitize our property files, in particular ahead of the anticipated move, trying to remove as much of our paper records as we can, as well as trying to enact our e-permitting process. So again, kind of remove the paper records and move to a new permitting system for building permits initially. Two specific new initiatives that are in the 2025 budget include the official community plan review. So that's a multi-year project to review and update our OCP. So we're working with the OCP steering committee and we have selected and hired a consultant. The next phase of the project will focus on gathering ideas and exploring options and like the community involvement. So we're having a workshop with our OCP steering committee next week to set up that engagement and communication plan for that next phase. And so we'll have more detail on that soon. And then the other new initiative in 2025 with budget implications would be the implementation of the municipal, regional, district tax. So this is a four-phase project. We're looking at doing phase one in January to May of this year. And that will look at completing the five-year strategic plan and a one-year tactical plan for tourism and an affordable housing plan as well. And then working with those plans to work consultation with the accommodation sector to seek approval of those plans and the desired MRDT tax rate on short-term rentals, or short-term accommodation. Something else in our department, so building permit revenue is a large revenue generator within our department. It tends to fluctuate year-to-year based on development activity on Bowen. And so trying to anticipate the, the level of revenue can, can be challenging. Just last year, council and staff reviewed our building permit fees and we increased the fees with a goal of remaining revenue control in terms of the building permit program. But we still see, we are forecasting a slight decrease in building permit revenue and that's based on a slowdown of general construction activity on Bowen, largely related to increased construction costs and increased interest rates. And then we sort of project that same level with slight increases going forward. And then finally wrap up, the planning department in our plan for 2025 has worked on many different strategic items in council's strategic plan. So including items in the action plan for the Housing Accelerator Fund, completing two longstanding projects of the Snow Cove Design Guidelines and the Active Transportation Plan. And looking to do in the later part of 2025, educational workshops on building more energy, energy efficient homes. So homes meeting energy step four. And so that's the end of my presentation. I'm open for any questions.
Questions for the manager? Daniel? Do we still have Mayor Andrew Widdes? Okay. Thank you, Ben. Very good. And I'd like to propose a five-minute break. We've been here for a couple of hours. Sorry, we just got back to you. Can I do that? Because.
Sorry about that. I didn't know.
Um.
Some nodding? Very good. Um, we're just all sitting down here, the guests. Mayor Leonard has had to leave, um, but otherwise we're back and so let's move to this. So I'll go over to you.
Okay, um, so I'll be talking about the, uh, the budget for the called the roads portion of Public Works, about half the department is it's, uh, related to utilities and that dealt with in separate, uh, to presentation. So, um, the roads portion of Public Works is, um, services that we're responsible for. Including maintenance of safe access to, um, municipal roads, um, and buildings and docks and other structures. Maintaining functional drainage drainage systems. Municipal parks, terminals, and features has already been out built by Carla. Maintaining the fleet equipment that we need to support these services. And delivery of capital projects, um, structure upgrades, asset replacements, and construction of new assets in some cases. Uh, we're also involved in permitting, um, usually permitting related developments as late as mine are usually involved as well as relating to driveway access and use of, uh, just the road right of ways. In terms of, um, new initiatives in the operations budget and for hopefully for 2025 is to implement a maintenance management system. Um, this would involve a new, um, module from the software that we currently have with, uh, from P S D citywide. We have the asset management module. And then there's a maintenance manager module as well, which will enable, um, the tracking of service requests, work orders, uh, scheduling and preventative maintenance, uh, inspections. To, um, dramatically improve, um, the organization and priority prioritization of operation maintenance tasks. Um, lead to improved communication between office staff and field staff, as well as communication with with council and with with the public. Um, it is a key aspect of of an overall asset management program. It's where, you know, the practices of asset management hit the road. Um, and that's a key strategic priority for council. Um, the service requests and work orders that are managed through the system can be linked to specific assets that would facilitate, uh, greatly facilitate and keep the asset database current and, uh, providing the rest of record of our asset management plan intervention. Um, just to, um, summarize where this, uh, our, our current F T Es that we have in the department um, are listed at eight point five, so we have, uh, myself. You can know about forty percent of my, uh, my compensation is applied to utilities. It's listed as one F T E here. You know, two, um, public works coordinator administrative positions. One of them is a, is currently a temporary position at point four F T E. Um, that will, uh, going forward be, um, strictly applied to the planning department. Um, so that's a reduction of point four F T E. We're looking for an increase of one F T E for an asset management coordinator, which we'll talk about in a second. Uh, then we have the superintendent, um, the operations manager who's responsible for roads and parks. Why is listed as point five there? The other five is applied to arcs. And then the operations currently have four currently. Operations. So the, the new, um, position requested is the, is an asset management coordinator that would be responsible for, uh, collecting and, uh, maintaining, um, capital asset information. That includes spatial data as well as, um, key information about the assets, like condition and estimated service life and, uh, coming up with, um, risk ratings for those assets and applying a risk management framework to our various asset categories. Establishing levels of service that we're trying to meet and, uh, building that into our, to our program. Coordinating the, um, the condition assessments and determination for the service lives of our assets. Development, actually developing the asset replacement and maintenance plans in collaboration with other staff. And then, uh, development and coordination of the maintenance management system that I mentioned previously. Also the key responsibilities for this position. Um, so essentially, we're, we're needing this position to ensure, um, continued and timely progress on asset management plan developments. Progress, made a lot of progress, but it's been slower than we would like and should council would like. Also providing the necessary capacity to implement, um, properly implement a maintenance management system. Um, and then all of this will improve the efficiency and effectiveness of our limited staff resources and focusing those on areas with the highest need. Um, getting into our capital expenditures, we have an annual, um, proximal million-dollar expenditure for culvert replacements. This is, um, an asset category that we've, um, currently have hot, um, highest risk. Uh, road failures, uh, where we have these failed culverts and there's quite a few of them around the island. We've already seen this happen in the past, in recent years where it's led to road failure. Um, these replacements, they need to be coordinated with utility and roads projects. Um, and all of the 2025 proposed expenditures on culvert replacements are integrated with, uh, for the most part, the, uh, the water main projects that are underway in Blue Water and are supposed to proceed in, in, uh, Eagle Cliff. And also the proposed road work through here. Um, we have road rehabilitation needs that are, um, extensive. We've, um, budgeted five hundred, five hundred fifty thousand this year, um, increasing by fifty thousand per year thereafter. Um, it's, it's not, um, you know, it's, it's not enough based on the, uh, the amount of the road assets that we have and the condition of them. So it's what we're able to do. So we have a number of, um, roads, uh, that we're looking at this year. It may be that we end up using a lot of the budget for Windjammer Road, which is, um, it's a chip seal road. It hasn't held up very well to the ongoing water main work. And, uh, so we're looking at the option of, um, paving a lot of that road rather than trying to, um, patch a portion of a chip sealed road with, um, with proper asphalt. Um, and then we've got, uh, other roads that are in, uh, you know, dire need of work, which is section of Taylor Road, Jason Road, um, White Sales Drive, which will probably be, uh, project for next year. Um, and we're currently working on development of a, of a, a ten-year road rehabilitation plan as part of our asset management plan. Um, we do have some high-risk, um, rock slopes adjacent to some of our roads. And we've been spending money, uh, we spent, we upgraded a portion of Smugglers Cove Road last year, which was at risk of failure, uh, slope next to it. Uh, there's some high-risk locations, all of Eagle Cliff Road, Cameron Road, Liz Road. Uh, we're looking at, um, a section of Eagle Cliff Road and Europa Trail where there's, uh, we consider the risk to the road and the public to be unacceptable and looking to clean up that next year. Um, we've got a provision to, um, do some repairs on the library building. Um, two hundred fifty thousand been budgeted. The estimates that we have for the utility needs, um, would include replacing some rotten beams. And, um, there's a, there's actually a failed culvert that runs underneath the building, which is a high-risk situation to be in that that needs to be dealt with. Um, dealing with those two, um, issues wouldn't, wouldn't cost us two hundred fifty thousand dollars. It, it was budgeted, um, higher just in case you get into, um, the replacement of the beams and, you know, uncover.
Or something else.
Other issues with the building, which is fairly old building. Um, we have some, uh, budget to, or proposing budget to replace, uh, some deficient elements. Uh, there are wharves. Um, there's, uh, seven piles that are, we've had some, uh, condition assessment done on the Snug Cove wharf. And there's, uh, seven piles that are, um, assessed as poor condition and need to be replaced. Uh, it's actually the condition of our insurance that we do replace those piles this year and that we review our, uh, condition assessment within three years of my break. There's also some repairs planned to the gardener dock, dock, some of the wood elements of the dock and wharf of, of Roddy need to be replaced. A new ramp is needed. Um, some equipment that we're looking at purchasing is, um, is the tanks and, uh, spreaders that are needed to apply brine, brine solution to the roads instead of, uh, salting them, uh, which is, uh, much more efficient in terms of use of materials. You need a lot less salt. It's what, uh, I would say most municipalities that deal with winter road conditions, um, have gone towards. Uh, certainly there's some situations where it's a lot more effective than salting. Situations like, uh, snowfall or anything, but, um, the temperature has dropped and, um, got black ice formed in these locations. Brining is. I want to do more efficiently with that.
Councilor Dr. Simpson?
Sorry, um, just go for it. I mean, I've never heard of this process. Would you be able to explain a little bit more like what that is? It makes me think of pickling the roads. I'm sure it's not quite that.
It's, it's making a solution, a, a saltwater solution. And then, uh, filling tanks on the back of our existing trucks with that, with that salt solution and then spraying it on the roads using, uh, um, spray your own back of the truck.
Okay, thank you.
Pickling roads, basically.
Sorry.
Councilor Morse? So this is going to be, we've already got one brine truck, right?
No, we don't.
I thought we did.
Uh, salt, um, spreading.
Oh, okay. I thought there was a big yellow or something that went on the back of one of the truck trucks.
Yeah, we put, we put salt in that and spread the salt.
Oh, it's salt, it's not brine?
Yeah.
I have a good question. Um, just looking at the image here that, uh, is on your slide. Um, would this also be able to catch the, uh, multi-use pathway?
Um, I'm not sure if we could, oh, we, we couldn't, um, we couldn't use our existing trucks on the multi-use path. Look at, um, maybe a smaller tank that we could install.
It's okay. We don't have to go into it now. I just thought if you had the question. Because I've seen people with, uh, yesterday, uh, going up the hill with their mobility scooters, uh, as well as people cycling to school and things like that. Okay, thank you. Continue, sorry.
The other thing we're looking at for the roads and it's been mentioned previously is, uh, buying inlay thermoplastic pavement markings in Snug Cove, which we're planning to do this year. The idea is that it's much more durable than our, uh, regular type of paint markings. So, uh, hopefully that leads to less lifecycle cost overall. And if it's effective in Snug Cove, we could apply similar approach in other, other, other parts of it. Um, we've also got, um, expenditures on the multi-use path. There's a project that's currently underway, extending the path from Iris and Lane further up Grafton Road. Um, that's, um, predominantly grant-funded, that project. Got active transportation grant as well as transit funding. And then our own, uh, large part of our own municipal contributions is coming from climate action funds.
Yeah.
Um, we've also got, um, to consider the next phase of the multi-use path where, um, we, we have grant money that's been approved to construct at least a portion. It's not allowed to do all of it, but a portion of the section up to Grafton Lake. Um, it require, uh, we've also applied for transit funding as well. We would, you know, we're hopeful that we would get. It does require a municipal contribution. Municipal contribution of approximately two, two hundred thirty-six thousand. Uh, we don't, uh, in the current draft of the budget, it's, it's, it's not included, but, um, I think it would, um, well, it, it doesn't look good for us if we apply for grants, commit to our portion of the funding and then later decide that we can't make it work. Something we need to find way included in this 2025 budget. Um, we also have heard from council, um, numerous occasions that perhaps we should be focusing on, building portions of the multi-use path elsewhere that aren't so challenging and we're able to get more for our money. In order to do that, we need to spend some of our money on planning and design and probably survey. And, uh, that's something that's also, um, not in this current draft of the budget. That it's, it's necessary for, for this project to continue and be successful.
Just so I can orientate, orient myself on the ground, there's a bunch of orange stakes on the side of the road. Where, where are you? I'm, I'm talking about the path, the bit that's being worked on now.
Yeah.
But then it appears to go back up to the road and there's some three or four orange states in the road. So is the most western of those states where the work's going to end?
That, that's the current plan. Yeah, we're just running into some issues, some geotechnical issues at the moment that we're trying to resolve. And, uh, if we're not able to come to a affordable resolution of those issues, then they have to terminate that project sooner.
And if it terminated sooner, does that mean we don't have to contribute any money?
Um, well, it's the grant funding is, is a percentage basis, so we would have to contribute. Less contribution. Um, also a big priority for our department is, um, construction of the new service yard. The existing service yard is, it's in very poor condition. It's undersized for our operational needs and it's not, it's not providing a safe, effective work environment for the staff that we need. Um, there is some work underway on a design for a new service yard. Um, and, uh, we would need some debt financing to be able to proceed with that project. That's something. That's still to be determined.
Somebody can post the G part, what do you think?
And, uh, in terms of, uh, wrap up, um, we, we do have, um, a lot of our operate proposed operation capital work plans that are supporting also strategic priorities. So there's including asset management. So that would be, um, the development of the asset management plan and program. And then the hiring of, uh, um, asset management coordinator position to assist with that. Um, and then, uh, replacement and repair of our highest risk assets is something that's, that's ongoing. And that's the case with this budget as well. That includes, um, roads and culverts, uh, wharves, the library, um, and of course the service yard. We're also focused on improving. We're also focused on improving operational capacity, which is another strategic priority. That's the reason for the proposed maintenance management system, as well as the service yard upgrade that we need. And, uh, we've looked at, uh, talked about some improved equipment as well for, for riding roads. Uh, there's also, and the multi-use path is related to climate change action, which is another strategic priority. Questions?
Councilor Morse, with my gardener dog. The ramp. I thought we replaced it not that long ago. And then my question is, what are you going to replace it with?
It would need to be something that's probably realigned or shorter. Um, at certain tides, the ramp goes all the way out to the edge of the float.
Been there at all times.
Yeah, and, um, so it's, what we've got there now isn't, isn't working. It's not, uh, it's not working for all conditions anyways.
Now, by, by when I said replace it with, I meant, is it going to be a steel ramp?
I, I would think so, or a aluminum.
Steel, yeah, aluminum, yeah. So not another way.
Uh, no.
Any more questions for the engine?
Hit you up later.
Okay, thank you very much. Unless there's more questions, then we'll move on to Recreation and Community Services.
Thank you. Hopefully not least. Um, Jillian Drake, I'm the manager of the Recreation and Community Services. Uh, the primary role of the Recreation Department is to create opportunities for our community that enhance individual, personal, and community health and wellbeing and build more community cohesion. So the vast majority of the, of the work that we do is represented in the variety of classes, camps, programs, workshops, evening drop-in sports and special events that we run for community members. Targeting zero through no maximum. Everything that we do. So, um, I just listed out, talk about a few of the things associated with program implementation because just saying we run programming doesn't really touch on the depth of what's involved in all of that. So there is a lot of registration and database management associated with programming. Um, every activity goes through a budgeting process, all the management, whether that survey is oversight of our instructors, um, extensive marketing that's required to essentially sell the product to the community. As you can imagine, running programs for children, there's a lot of engagement with the parents, a lot just the participants. Um, customer service is a very main part of the role, um, and influencing these programs. Um, most of the programs are run by contracted instructors and seasonal employees. So there's a lot of management oversight of all of these additional staff, which is reflected in our salary line item as well within the budget. That includes all these additional contractors. So they all, you have to recruit, schedule, provide some feedback to them and make sure that everybody gets paid. Uh, volunteer engagement is somewhat unique within our departments, um, different from the rest of the organization in that for example, the leaders in training program or the adult evening sports are all heavily reliant on volunteer efforts. So volunteers, you know, need extensive training and oversight and management as well. So you know, recently we're doing things, we're updating the, the agreements with the facilitators on what are their responsibilities and the expectations, making sure we're in alignment with our EDI policy, um, personnel policy and anti-bullying guidelines and that. So there's a fair amount in volunteer management. Um, all of the special events that we run, you know, a unique set of requirements for, um, to make them run. And so we always seek out additional funding for those. Um, another key part of what we do is work with organizations and businesses across the island to make sure that together we're offering, offering a comprehensive and complimentary suite of programming to the community. And we're not offering the same things on the same days with the same people, things like that. So we work sensibly with the school, the children's center, after-school club, football club, health center, the hearth, the library, you know, various businesses ongoing as well. Um, also deeply in our operational plan is, um, so we, our department works with the parks operations department um, and the school to make sure that the facilities, the sport facilities located at the school are properly managed and maintained. So we coordinate all of that management of both turf field and the grass field, the tennis courts and the fencing around the courts. And we do those bookings for those as well. This is a, quite a hybrid, uh, part of our operation organizationally because we do a lot of the work. The Parks Operations actually does a lot of the mowing type of work, but the budget is actually located within parks. The, the cost for the materials and the quality contractors are within in the parks. Um, I guess I should have listed at the top of this slide, uh, finish the build of the community center because I think we can now very safely say that will land in twenty twenty-five. Um, but once we do get that facility open, um, and especially also in order to open it as well, you know, we need to build that fitness center with the new equipment that we have funding for, building storage for it and the specialized program, the programming that is a very high need that's being communicated to us throughout the island. People are saying less important what you get, more important you teach us how to use it. So we're, we're hearing that very loudly and clearly. So, um, this, this year will be an expansion of recreation programming. The new facility gives us types of equipment in rooms and space that we haven't had access to before. So all sorts of new types of things can happen there. Our department will be overseeing the room rentals for any room in that facility. In order to operate this facility, um, we need to update our recreation office manual procedures. We need to update a lot of our policies in recreation, including the the recreation schedule for the consolidated fees bylaws. Views and charges policy, sorry, bylaw. Finishing up signage at the facility, if you know, it's expensive. And, um, our department works a lot with the facility manager and the B for implementing those enhancement projects that we spoke about. That we spoke about earlier today. Six months into running, being in the facility, we have an agreement with the West Vancouver School District that we will renegotiate the joint the joint use agreement with the school. Because once we're out of the school, the only programs that will stay at the school are things that really cannot take place in the community center. So that's things like the evening sports and the afternoon, um, programs for the kids. Anything involving balls that can damage lights and as equipment will not be moving over. Um, we've submitted a request for a point five FTE to be added to our department to oversee all of those, um, all aspects of bookings for the new facility. So all of that, um, communications with the client, um, contract and database management, um, there's, there's a lot to do with that quite honestly. It's a fairly complicated system. Um, as we've identified various types of users for the facility, they vary in what rates they pay, when deposits are required, if their deposit's how long out they have to pay their final balance. So there's, there's quite a lot of complicated details to keep track with all the bookings. And we want to make sure that we're doing it in a really organized fashion, using the new software that we've built, but haven't yet tried out yet. So implementing that and making sure that the financial reconciliation at the end of the month is really properly allocating the funds to the right places. Because it's the same software as being used for booking, for, um, programming. So this, this facility coordinator, we anticipate, um, they will be up at the front desk. So they would help with all that front reception responsibility. We've mentioned as well the facility hours. So the, it's a, it's much greater need for a front desk support than what we're currently facing right now. So we're looking at how we spread out the departmental start and finish times and covering that desk as much as possible. But there are definitely weekends as well that we're not accounted for where we are now. So um, this role will help with some of that front desk coverage. Perhaps initially they'd be able to help with some of that event liaison as well. But we know as everything becomes more successful, as the marketing for the facility is successful, word of mouth spreads, more bookings happen. You know, the success of one, um, will indicate more neat work on another hand, you know, so on for that. The capital expenditures listed in the budget, um, the first one is fifty thousand dollars for fitness center equipment and funding. So this is grant-funded through the B C Healthy Communities, that is secured funding. Twenty-five thousand for renovations, equipment and furniture to create a dedicated youth center. This grant application is in, we won't know until May if we're successful. But as I mentioned at the December ninth, um, council meeting, um, the youth center is, there's a very, very strong need for a new youth center if we're to maintain this programming for youth on the island. It's become a critical need now. Even just this last weekend, we weren't able to use the space that we have an arrangement with because they're renovations. We're making the space unavailable for us. So, um, it is a very, very strong need to create that space, to have a place that the kids would, they want to go to and get the support that they need. Forty thousand dollars for significant art installation at the community center. This, and I apologize, it's, sorry, it is in there, funded by the Public Art Reserve. This is a critical piece of information for that. So this is not a funding request that is new. Funds, this is a reserve of funding that has been built up over the years. It's been a ten thousand dollar allocation per year for several years and it has accumulated in this public art reserve with the anticipation of doing a major art installation that is at the new facility. So, um, it's, at this stage, the request by the Public Art Advisory Committee is to bring those funds to be, you know, from reserve into available, into the capital budget. But there is no project in, in mind yet. That would all be, you know, extensive community engagement and opportunity for involvement. But what that would look like, and that would be coming back, definitely coming back to council for approval, what that project would look like. But there is a strong desire for a squamish artist to be involved in, in a significant piece of work that is probably exterior to the, the building itself. Um, the last item on this list, a hundred and sixty thousand for a multi-sport court of Owen Island Community School. This is, as it says, it's for something in twenty twenty-four, which gives us a lot of funding to do the work that we need to do with the school and the school district on what that would look like, where are funding sources available for that? We know the the PAC at the school is interested in helping support finding funding for that. Um, and I think this is, this is highly contingent on how that, that partnership plays out and where we, where funding sources can come for that. Next slide is about our revenue expectations. So I included a graph there to show um, the revenue that has come in from program fees since twenty nineteen. You can see the plummet, that's COVID. When the fees plummeted down and then steadily were rising again until we lost use of the fitness studio, um, in which case it came back down again. But we are projecting two thousand, um, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in program fees. My goals actually exceed that one. Now that we have the space to do it. Hopefully we can do that. The grants I've, I've mentioned already, fifty thousand dollars from the Healthy Living DC grant, um, hopefully forty thousand dollars from the civil forfeiture grant to support that youth center renovations. And our department annually applies for a lot of small grants to support the activities that we run. So that includes things like the B C Recreation and Parks Association funding, Heritage Canada, the Bowen Island Liberty Task Group. Um, I think we might find another request that could go to the community foundation. The Rotary Club, we are interested in, they want to work together and submit a grant application to the district to support that. Um, and this faction is another funding source for programming. Just to wrap it up for our department, um, the opening of this facility, um, really, this is a massive accomplishment for our organization. Um, and I think it actually supports, supports more than strategic plan for diverse and resilient community. We know, um, community engagement has happened considerably through that. It's, um, it's going to be, it's pivotal for us. We're going to be able to do so many more things. Um, but critical to the successful use of that as a facility rental will be that booking coordinator because it's just would, would really stretch the capacity of our department extensively to both expand programming and front desk and that booking. Um, but with this new facility, the department, Recreation Department is in a very strong position to fulfill our primary role, promoting healthy lifestyles, supporting personal development and fostering social progress.
Thank you very much. It looks like you're finished then. So I'm wondering, do people have, uh, questions from then? Councilor Morse?
Sorry, but budgets and things kind of throw my train. So with the youth center, which I totally think is a great idea, I'm just a little confused with the numbers. There's a forty thousand dollar grant that you've applied for, for the RCMP Civil Orchards Program. Now, is that going to cover a part of the twenty-five thousand?
It would cover all of it.
Okay, so the, so the total cost, if you do it the way you want to do it, is forty thousand?
And, um, that was doing it deluxe. Honestly, if you get a portion of that grant or if we had to, if we're looking to fund it internally, we could scale back what some of that looks like.
Okay, but I guess that brings me to my question. If you have it budgeted for it, you can't spend it. So why don't you have forty thousand dollars in the budget being funded, um, by forty thousand dollar with grants?
I'm being conservative. Oh, I see. Right, we have it at twenty-five.
You've got twenty-five being coming from reserve funds, like forty from the grant, but, you know, if you, if forty pays for the whole thing. I'm not sure whether you've got it covered off right, but I, I think.
Yeah, we do have youth center at, you're right, twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to do an amendment if we get the grant or, or we do. Probably know by the time we're ready to do the final draft.
So the main question is, like, are we paying rent?
How standard for the ongoing?
Um, not yet, but it would be once, if we were to move into that space, um, there is a rent agreement that it's actually not very different from the previous facility when you, when you add it up with this much.
Yeah, it's in. Okay, because that isn't covered in that description. And I think okay, now I'll fill that to the general pages. What page are you on in here? Really would be, as I said before. Um, so what are you? Are you Recreation and Community Services Department or the, are you the Community Recreation Services?
Can we ask the questions in a respectful way?
Well, I'm frustrated. So I didn't think I was being disrespectful. I'd say, what are you? Because there's a mix. Some places you're talking about Community Recreation Services and other places you're saying the Recreation and Community Services Department.
I, I see why you're saying that in terms of department name at the top of some of these plans, they say Community Recreation Services. Absolutely. And then I believe officially the title is Department of Recreation and Community Services.
So community services is still there as a, as a job function?
It is still there, um, and admittedly it is one of the, the areas of the department that does, will benefit from additional attention to it as we have the capacity.
Okay. And then I guess the other question is, um, I'm assuming what you mean under, um, projects and initiatives. There's that develop a recreation schedule for consolidated fees and charges by law. You're wanting to amend the fees and charges by law to include a schedule for the, uh, recreation fees, is that the?
Correct.
And I guess my other one is, um, with that booking software, I remember in the old days we used to get statistics of how many courses were offered and how many people attended and all that sort of stuff. Is that something that'll be coming in the future?
Um, I can definitely generate that. I've not had the request for it in the past, but we can certainly do that.
When I sat on the Rec- Recreation, we used to get, um, as I said, many years ago.
That's okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor Kid?
Just a comment on page twenty-seven. I like that you highlighted crochets.
Sorry, there.
Page twenty-seven. You highlighted crocheting.
Just to show the diversity, right? I like writing it out to chainsaw maintenance. It's combo.
Very good. You do, um, some removal maintenance too as well.
Safety. Chainsaw safety. Yeah. Okay, any more questions for manager? You're in done?
Thank you very much, and I'll pass it by.
Well, we're into the home stretch now, so thank you very much.
Oh, we have no questions.
Well, hang on, she's just going to talk about next steps and.
I have a couple of good things. So after the presentations by each of the departments, I just kind of wanted to take it up a notch and talk a little bit about higher level, what are the cost drivers driving the nine and a half percent increase in this budget? So one of the big ones obviously is the F T E staffing changes. So of our, of our complete overall F T E changes going through for the, for the 2025 plan, one of them is coming from utilities. So we haven't heard about that one yet. But 3.9 of them are driven through the general fund. So there is the asset management coordinator position between the fire department and emergency planning. There's another one there. Half an F T E for the booking coordinator from the recreation department. A net 1.4 from parks, roads, operations comes to the 3.9 being funded, passed to be funded out of the general fund. The costs associated with those, overall, the staffing changes from 2025 over 2024 come to about 494,000 dollars. Big part of that, almost a quarter of that, comes from policy-driven grid progression and cost of living increases to existing staffing. There's the 45,000 dollar one-year pilot project that we are looking at funding from the, funding from the surplus regarding a ferry marketing one-year position. There is a 15,000 dollar increase within planning relating to building inspection. We've got this level three building that requires a higher level of building inspection than what we have on staff. So we have arranged with a building inspector from West Van to come over and support Jared, our building inspector, to, to get that building approved. And as well, there are some additional level three buildings coming up in the community. I'm thinking of Snuggled House. And again, we don't have that level of building inspection. So we are relying on, on the West Van to provide that mentorship and support in regards to those two, those two projects. Um, couple of, just through benefits, we have a, about a 10,000 dollar increase into our benefits package over last year. And then there are some kind of reinstatements. So last year we had a plan, we thought we would be able to consolidate the business license inspection function within our bylaw roles, within our, within our bylaw complement of staff. We tried it, it didn't work. We need, it's too much work and we needed to get that 0.4 F T E business license position back. So that is what Jared is the point four business license inspector and point six building inspector. So he has that combined as a one F T E role. That seems to be working quite well, but we weren't able to achieve those cost savings in last year's budget that we had hoped for by, by consolidating those two functions within bylaw. So we have, we have provided for that F T E for business licensing back in this year's budget. And a proposal to increase elective official remuneration that has been put into this budget. We did have a council meeting last week in which there was direction to staff to put the consideration for any changes to remuneration off until the beginning of next council. So that is something that will be coming out of this budget. That was coming in at a cost of about 68,000 dollars. So we'll, we'll remove that for the next draft that comes forward to council. The cost for those F T E requests, and that's if we implement them partway through the year in 2025, that's about 196,000 dollars. So all in all, those changes to the staffing complement come to 494,000 and that would require a tax increase of about 5.45%. Um, yeah, that piece is being removed. I'm looking at the, how that impacts both 2025 and 2026 because they're being considered to be implemented later on in the year. They're not full year cost estimates. The 196, if fully expensed and, and those positions were implemented in 2025 and we had them full-time for 12 months in 2026, then those positions would end up adding 395 to next year's budget, 395,000 to next year's budget. And that is driving, that would drive a property tax increase of about 4.7% for, for 2026. Which is why, part of the reason why we do believe that this 9.5% increase needs to be in place this year and will need to be in place next year as well. The other side of what is driving the increase are reserve fund contributions. These are the contributions. These are property tax-funded contributions to statutory reserve funds which support asset management or equipment replacement. 475,000 dollar increase from 2025 over 2024 amounts. That translates to a property tax increase of 5.8%. And again, those would be increasing each year, not quite by as much. We're almost, I think, we're almost at that level where we have an ongoing level of contribution to reserve funds that can sustain the investment that we need to make each year. But an increase in 2026 by 230,000, increase in, in 2027 by 335,000. And then going on between two and three percent each year, increasing those contributions to reserves to support asset management, infrastructure replacement and equipment replacement.
All right, can we?
You're up for a quick question?
Yeah, for sure.
Thanks. Just clear my mind, statutory reserve fund, statutory by, like, these are things we can't change. We must contribute to these no matter what.
Statutory just means we passed a bylaw to establish that fund. Yeah. And then we have these non-stat funds. They're kind of informal. We just kind of say, oh, let's take somebody in there.
Yeah, I was just wondering who the statutory was.
Yeah, they're important to us because they are, all of them are represented. They're all very detailed informations provided in our statements.
No, I appreciate that. I was just wondering if they're imposed from somewhere.
No, no, and they're our own rules. They're our own.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah. Looking at that change, I, I, I've made a graph here and it shows year over year contributions versus utilization of money in our statutory reserve funds. So in 2023, it's showing utilization around just over 2 million dollars and contributions up around 4 million. In 2024, the contributions are just around 2 million and the utilization is 5 million. So they can see there that we're going through this period of intense capital investment. We're using our reserve funds to pay for all of the expenditures that are coming to build a community center, to invest a million dollars a year into culver replacement, to, to pay for all of these sort of initial front-loaded investments that we need to make in our assets in order to kind of just get us to a point where we're making an annual regular contribution. So over time, starting in 2026, our expectation is that our contributions will be a little bit higher than our utilization each year. And over time, that gap, that, that gap between what we put in and what we use will continue to grow and will grow. And as that grows, if you look at it in another way, you can see that over time, the, the gap between what we put in and what we use becomes our, our annual increase in savings. So we will increase our reserve funds over time. And that is what we are hoping to do with this five-year plan. Just a quick look at our budgeted capital expenditures. These numbers for 2023 and 2024 are, 2023 is actual, 2024 is unaudited, actual and not quite complete because we don't have all the bills paid for 2024 yet. But our 2023 capital expenditures were 9.7 million, dropping to 6.1 million in 2024. We expect 6.5 million of capital expenditures in 2025. We expect 4.7 million of capital expenditures in 2026. So that takes into account the work shared project. We will have continued expenditures on the work shared project for 2027 according to this plan. So they're dropping down to 3.5 million. And in, starting in 2028 and 2029, we, we think we need to be spending an annual investment of about 2.5 million dollars in our infrastructure to replace the worn-out stuff and, and make sure that going forward, we're in, we're trying to, you know, keep our assets in a state of good repair. I have a slide for you on debt servicing. So we are right now spending, this again is a just general fund. It is not including the utilities, where we're loan and principal interest and payments. In 2025, we will be spending about 675,000 dollars on interest and principal repayments. And if we do take on new debt related to the work shard, that will go up. That will go up to about 770,000 for 2026. Will increase again to 810,000 for 2027. And then it will reduce to an ongoing annual expenditure of about 750,000 from 2028 onwards. There's a little drop between 27 and 28 as the fire truck loan is repaid and that, those payments drop off. But yeah, with new debt with the work shard, all on a taxpayer-supported debt would be sitting at 750,000 dollars a year. I do want to, for a later iteration, I will do a calculation where we're at with our debt servicing ratio that imposes a cap with the province. I just, we need to include our utility debt in order to calculate that. So I don't have those numbers yet, but I will bring that forward at the next budget meeting. Next steps for our financial plan development process. We're here today at the committee of the whole, January 20th. So the public consultation period opens tomorrow. We do have several different methods that we will be collecting feedback from, from the people. February 18th is scheduled for our committee of the whole for the utility budget meeting. February 20th, we are scheduling an open house on Zoom. That will be an afternoon meeting. It's scheduled for one o'clock. Again, that's a less formal question answer type meeting where members of the public are free to participate, bring their questions and have a very informal discussion with staff so that they can better understand what goes into this budget and what makes up the expenditures in there. February 24th, I'll bring a second draft back to council with some of the known changes already that we know about, that, that we will make for the, for the second draft. A week later, February 27th, we will have an evening, same Zoom public budget meeting, open house, question answer format for people to attend. And we'll keep the consultation period open until March 7th. On March 24th, we will come back to council with a final draft based on what we've heard, based on council meetings in between where we come for requests for direction. And at that meeting, I'll be looking for a, a direction from council to draft a budget bylaw with a very specific X percentage of tax increase at that meeting. Then April 14th and April 28th, we're looking to get those financial plan and tax rate bylaws through the adoption process. We do have a mandatory requirement to have these bylaws adopted before May 15th. So that gives us some additional window room, just in case we need some more time to, to get a financial plan adopted. And opportunities for the public to provide their budget feedback. Of course, there's always the dedicated budget email at budget@bimbc.ca. They can always send an email to mayor and council's email. They can always attend any open council meeting, any public comments. We do have the two opportunities for the open house meetings and we do have the committee of the whole for utilities scheduled for February 18th. And lastly, and new this year, we are trying a new dedicated website. It's off our, it's off our website, but it's a, it's a community discussion board. So if you go to our website, you'll see some chat bubbles in the top right-hand corner and that will take you to the discussion board. You do have to register with a username and accept the, the terms and conditions and open up any budget discussion topic that you're interested in and it will be monitored. And staff, myself, we will be responding to any of the questions or comments that are, we receive in that forum. So we're looking forward to see how that goes this year.
Um, and that's it. I'm happy to take any questions or feedback from members of council. Nobody from the public. Are there any final questions before we go to the recommendation? Counselor Ray?
Just confirming that we're going to get this whole presentation?
Yeah.
The slides?
Yeah, they'll be on the website and we can email them. We can't email them directly because it's too big, but we'll send you the link to where you can find it on the website.
Great.
Yeah.
Usually Sophie puts them into the agenda.
Oh, perfect.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can look back at your agenda. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I, I did find, I just typed consultation into the search bar and it popped right up. Great. So I'm looking forward to how that online discussion pages, yeah, works. And that'll be very interesting. Any more questions for director? Okay, then I'm looking forward to somebody moving the motion. Counselor, you're in. Okay, I'll ask Sophie to read out the, to motion there.
The committee of the whole received the draft 2025 to 2029, five-year financial plan and draft staff every take a process and consultation.
Good. Just so everybody knows what the motion is. Very good. I've got a mover. Do I have a second, nurse? Thank you, Counselor Gay. Any discussion? If you have a question, okay, then I will call the question. All those in favor? Raise your hand. Thank you. That passes unanimously. And thank you very much to all of our professional staff for presenting so thoroughly. As I see, it's now a little bit after four o'clock, so that's a long afternoon, but very good information. Thank you very much for that. And I look forward to all kinds of comments. Input, go ahead, Counselor.
I'm moving to a jerk.
I thought you might. Okay, that's, and do I have a second?